Good evening. And this is Janine Ruffo, President of the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District. I would like to open the public hearing for the review of the district code of conduct and consideration of any proposed changes to this plan. Our regular Board of Education meeting will commence at 7:00 PM. Good evening. At this time, I would like to conclude our public hearing on the notice of changes to the district code of conduct and consideration of any proposed changes to the plan. And I would now like to open the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of February 13, 2020. Can you please stand and join me as we salute our flag?
(inaudible) (inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to resolve to approve the minutes of the business meeting of January 23, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would like to make an announcement that the Treasurers' report for December 2019 is available in the business office. And now I would like to propose to the board that we adjust the schedule somewhat and move our student representative report up to before presentations because apparently they have big tests, their teachers give them tests the night after board meetings.
That's out of objection.
There's no objections. So, students, take your lunch.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. We are sending up a freshman representative up to Albany to the League of Women Voters. She will learn about leadership and she will shadow people in office of New York. We also have sent a senior representative up to the community that cares meeting and they talked about drug prevention and shared some of their thoughts and beliefs on how they could convey it to the school and the overall community at Putnam Valley.
I would add that it was really nice to have a high school student at the CTC meeting. We have the two middle school students, but it was really nice to have a high school representative.
That's great. Okay. Is that all from the students? Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. All right. Financial status update sounds very official, Dr. Love, but you are now on the agenda for a financial status update.
Oh, very optimistic, I'm sure.
It's just an update.
All right. Am I good? All right. Good evening, everyone. So, I'm going to provide a quick presentation. This is very similar to a presentation that I've already provided to the elementary school and middle school staff and will soon to the high school staff. The purpose of this presentation is really just to provide an overview of where we are in terms of our current financial status. It's certainly not meant to be gloom and doom, but it's really meant to be sort of a reality check of where we are and just really to raise an awareness of how we need to cautiously move forward in a way to, that's going to be most financially prudent. So, the basis of this presentation really started with the creation, Jill Figarilla and I created sort of a long-term financial plan that looked back to 2017, '18, and forward to the '27, '28 school year. Now, this document is obviously hundreds of rows long, but we just pulled out snippets and pieces of information from it that I thought was important. The piece that I want to emphasize on this slide is all of the projections that were based, our slides on, are based upon the numbers in yellow on the bottom of the screen. So, those are our budget-to-budget percent increases. And really, the point is, is that we're really using very modest numbers, 1.45, 1.46, up to 1.50 percent budget-to-budget increases. And so, I just want to emphasize, this isn't like we're going to raise our budget 10% in one year and that's what the driving force behind this is. So, just a quick review of the ideal way in which to build a budget is on the expense side, those are our salaries, our benefits, our supplies, equipment, other things of this sort. And on the revenue, we have three main sources of revenue. We obviously have our taxes, which we know are capped by the state. We use a formula to determine our tax levy cap every year. State aid is something, again, we get it from the state. It tends to vary, never quite get as much as we think we will, but obviously, that's something that's very much out of our control in terms of what we get in state aid. Other is out of district tuition, interest we earn on monies, other little bits and pieces of money that we're able to accrue during the year that get added into the pot for revenues. At the end of the day, you'll notice in this graphic, there's a balance between our expenses and our revenues, which is the ideal way in which we want to operate. This slide represents our current budget situation. As you see on the left, our expenses remain the same, salary, benefits, supplies, equipment, et cetera. On the right-hand side, our taxes, state aid, and other do not quite make up the same amount as the expenses. So, what we're forced to do each year is to reach into our reserves to balance our budget. So, taking a quick, closer look at what that amount is that we're reaching into our reserves, so you'll see over the last few years, the difference between our expenses and our revenue is our reserves. And in some ways, like anyone would at home, your reserves is almost like your savings account, right? If your expenditures exceed the money you have in your checking account, you're forced to seek money elsewhere to balance your checkbook and you would have to reach into the reserves to do that. So, in '17, '18, we took a little bit over $2.5 million from our reserves to balance our budget. In '18, '19, a little over $3.5 million of our reserves. In '19, '20, $2.5 million. So, $2.5 million for this school year. And then, now we're projecting forward of what it'll look like. The red line after the '22, '23 school year, that identifies the point at which we would be completely, we would have completely exhausted our reserves. So, the chart on the bottom is just a graphic that shows our projection of our reserves decreasing while the chart on the right shows our budget-to-budget increases over the next 11 years. Again, our budget-to-budget increases are based upon a 1.45 percent increase budget-to-budget. So, it's a very modest figure. The good news is, is we don't technically, we don't usually spend every penny of those reserves. At the end of the school year, we sometimes have a little bit of money left which we can use to replenish, but it's never equal to the amount of money we took out of the reserves. So, we're not restoring our original balance to our savings account. So, what this chart shows, these are our actual expenses. So, at the beginning of the '17, '18 school year, our reserves were a little bit over $16 million. The number 15-059-716 represents that was our balance, our reserves at the conclusion of the '17 and '18 school year. And the same is true for '18, '19, and then '19, '20. So, what you'll notice here is over those three years, we will have exhausted 31% of our actual reserves. Those numbers, although they still appear high, should be noted that a little over $3 million of that money is earmarked for special things. Sometimes, some items require voter approval. Not all of that money are we able to use to balance our budget. The blue line represents an assumed decrease in our expenses. So, at that point in time, in order to project out further, we had to start reducing our expenditures with, to prevent running out of reserves that year. And then, the red line is sort of a projection around, between the '26, '27, '27, '28 school year. That's the point at which we will have exhausted our entire reserve balance. So, we certainly have some options. Just like any school district in the state, and many school districts are facing the same reality that we are, the one option is to seek a supermajority vote, which would require a 60% approval, voter approval. I guess sort of the, one of the big downsides of that is only 55% of all school districts in the state who have requested a supermajority vote passed. There's the option to just expend all of our reserves and then be forced to rapidly reduce our expenses below our revenue line. The most sort of recent or local example of this is the Bedford School District. I know it's well documented that the Bedford School District went through this crisis in 2016, and I think it resulted in the loss of 60-something positions. A couple of those teachers who were laid off are actually teachers here in Putnam Valley now, so their loss was certainly our gain. And then, really, the option that I hope that we're able to follow is to continue to work on closing our expense-revenue gap. And by doing that, we're going to extend the availability of our reserves and hopefully extend it to the point where other districts in the area are forced to start seeking supermajority votes or maybe receive some relief from the state in terms of the tax levy or state aid to make up for the difference between the two. But those are really our three options moving forward. So, at the same time, our reality is, is that we have a declining enrollment. In 2011, we had a little over 1,800 students. Our current student body is about 1,608 students, and that's projected to go down to approximately 1,450 students in 2025. So, the hope is that gradual, as we close the gap between our expenses and revenue, the opportunity to do so presents itself through a decreasing enrollment. And it makes us look hard whenever we have an opportunity to eliminate a position through attrition. If we have a teacher retiring, we look very hard to consider whether or not that's a position that we need to fill, knowing that we're still trying to close the gap between the two. So, our budget priorities remain the same as they have in years past. I think it's essential that we continue to maintain our programs, that we examine our budget for efficiencies, that we keep our eyes focused on student-centered priorities. We continue to advocate for funding. We explore all potential revenues for resources, for potential revenue sources. We continue to support our growing needs for students' social, emotional health. That we do whatever we can to control our expenses. We know we have to support our increasingly diverse student body. And then, we certainly want to encourage voter turnout. It's my prediction that every school district in the area in the next 10 years will be having very similar conversations about massive cuts or seeking supermajority votes in order just to maintain their programs and staffing. So, that's it. Any questions?
Quick question, just, really just about one of the slides. Going back to, I guess it was slide number five and six, kind of combined. You said that 30, I guess in slide six, you said 31% of the reserves expected were used. Is that 31% of what, of the 2.5, 3.5, and 2.5 that we had put aside for each of those three school years?
The 31% that represents, that was from our total reserve balance.
Okay.
So, the decrease from what was a little over 16 million to what is a little over 11 million
Okay.
represents a 31% decrease in our entire reserve balance.
Over, that's, of course, over three years.
Over three years.
Three academic years, we used 31% of the fund.
Correct. Correct. We use a much greater percentage of the actual reserves we allocate to balance the budget compared to what we're able to put back into the reserves at the end of the year.
Right. Because I know the previous slide had just given the numbers of $2.5 million, whatever, but this was the percentage utilized.
Right. So, the first one is what was allocated. The second slide was what was actually expended.
So, I'm going to steal a line from the mouths of children, because probably nobody at home saw, heard this, but we do have one child that is here, and he said, "Not good." And I totally agree with him that this doesn't bode well. You said it's not gloom and doom, but it kind of is. Because the idea that we're going to be able to kind of sell and force a series of communities to look for supermajority votes, we don't have that history at all, even when we have no budget increases, when we have a zero budget increase. I think that's something that, you know, to be able to count on that, I'd love to know actually the data, you know, the Bedford deal was in 2016. Here we are, 2020, and where they sit today post that issue and how they've been able to fare specifically since they had, they failed that budget vote and they had to make significant cuts. I think right now, we're probably right at a tipping point for significant bending of the expense curve. I think it's really something that's, we need to, you know, and I'm glad that we're doing this as we're entering budget season and that it kind of puts things in a different perspective when you're looking at, '27, '28 is not a long way away.
Mm-hmm.
It really isn't. We have to think about that when we're talking about contracts. We got to think about that when we're talking about all kinds of different things, because I do not, I don't see in this climate right now, and I don't foresee the climate getting, the idea that the economy is going to get any better now than what we have now, it's probably more likely that it will get worse than what it is now. And I think that also turns public sentiment against raising taxes at all, let alone trying to go with a 60% vote. So, I, you know, when I look, think about the kindergarten class that's coming in for, that's doing registration now for the class of, what, 2036? I mean, that's, we're only, that's even 10 years added on to this. So, I think about what's going to happen to the students that are getting registered right now for the class of 2036, and we're looking at, you know, being forced into a supermajority or something significantly more draconian than that if we're not able to bend that curve to be ready for 10 years beyond this for a class of 2036. So, I think it is, we are in a pretty rough spot right now. I kind of liken it to where we were, wow, it's, it kind of feels weird, but when Janine and I both got on the board, we had to start with cuts in 2009, yeah, 2009
And '10.
And '10. A series of cuts that started, I think, in 2008, right before. I think we need to look very carefully as we're proposing our budget when we're talking about even adding a .8 or .4. I think we need to be looking very, very closely at that. I know this is not the budget conversation, but it's, we have no, I don't think we have a choice, but that's just my sense and the way I'm feeling seeing these numbers.
I mean, I think you're right. We have to start bending that expense curve, and I think that's really why I thought this was an important conversation to have, but I don't think it's too late for us to do that. I mean, obviously, our first goal is to never get to the supermajority vote and to find a way to increase our revenues, decrease our expenses, and make these reserves last as long as possible. I mean, that's obviously every district's goal, and I certainly plan on doing everything I can to make that happen. I think my fear is, I want to, I don't want to continue sort of on a roller coaster ride, right? I don't want to, we just went through a couple of years of high levels of spending, and I think there's been really drastic and good changes made to the school district. I think that spending has realized a lot of excellent programs and staff, so I don't want to just start heading back down to the bottom of the roller coaster, cut those programs, cut the staff, and then a couple of years find ourselves saying, "Wow, we really need to spend more money."
But we don't need the loop.
No, we don't.
We don't need to loop. We don't need that excitement.
So, I think my goal is to sort of, let's start looking at this not as a roller coaster, but start sort of gently easing our way down the hill. And Jill and I have spent, it feels like 100 hours staring at spreadsheets already, and that's obviously the lens in which I look at everything, right? So, we already have, in this projection, we have over $2 million, $2.5 million projected to balance next year's budget. So, already in my head, I'm like, well, what can we do to reduce that number? Because if I could reduce that number, I could extend how long our reserves last. Now, reducing that number obviously means cutting something, but it's, but I want to slowly do it as opportunities present itself, as it makes sense, as opposed to just hitting the bottom of the hill and being forced to do massive things. I think the other part of the story is, and I think maybe this was a lesson learned from Bedford, is the Bedford School District, for, I'm sure, very real reasons, decided not to maximize their tax levy year after year. And that quickly, so that just, they ate more and more of their reserves, and then they quickly realized that the reserves, they were millions and million-dollar shorthole, and they had no reserves left to make it up. So, I think part of it is, is that we have to sort of be careful in terms of making sure if the state's going to cap what our levy is, that we have to be conscious as to decisions we make regarding how close to that cap we want to get, because the, as that money compounds over years, it certainly could have a very drastic impact on our budget.
Sure. The negative compounding factor for us.
Right.
Okay. I absolutely agree with the gradual and thoughtful, because I am, I'm very, very proud of the staff we have and the quality of the staff we have, and I'm very, very proud of the program we have put in place. So, I really don't, there's not anything that I think I would say, "Well, that could go." You know where that can go. There's nothing I want to go. So, I think what that means is we have to be creative, and we currently have 200 less students than we did 10 years ago. We have to look very carefully at what we do have, and may, it may seem as a board that we're nickel and diming, but I think it's more important to nickel and dime than lose programs or lose bodies. So, you know, if people have to maybe work between the middle school and the high school or figure out ways, I'm not going to throw anything out now, because it'll just be crazy thinking, but we have to look, as we go through the budget presentations, and you're going to hear some hard questions on our end, the hard questions are because we don't want to cut any staff and we don't want to change any programs. We want to keep our spending where it is and have our increases be the contractual raises and costs that coexist with those programs. And pretty much, that's it. That's my doom and gloom message for the day.
Any other questions?
No, that's it for now. I'm sure we're going to be seeing this presentation throughout budget season.
I guess my only other comment on this is, you know, even if we think that we could get a 60% supermajority once and we are successful, that doesn't mean it's going to happen again the next year. I mean, it's not as though that cures anything. That just solves the problem for one year, and to expect that we're going to get into a culture where we're going to be able to mobilize enough people and convince 60% of our voters that it's a budget they should support is something that I don't think is realistic at all. So, again, it is just a one-time situation. It's not just a one-time fix at all, even to get the supermajority.
Yeah. I mean, the only way would be a one-time piece is if CPI comes in at 0% one year or state aid is substantially reduced by the state. I mean, there's certainly a lot of variables that have a very direct impact on our budget that we have absolutely no control over.
Right.
So, the state is facing $6 billion shortfall, and what does that mean for our state aid? Or CPI comes in at 0 one year, like that's a, that's a drastic
Right.
Like, that's a big problem if that happens again in the near future. That would certainly exacerbate our problem.
Thank you.
All right. So, rather than sit down and do this, I'm going to do it from here. So, our next presentation will be done by Dave Spittle, who's going to do our proposed budget for operations, maintenance, and transportation. Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Dave.
So, I'm going to increase my budget significantly now.
Why don't you just step aside now?
So, I'm here.
I know, your timing, your order was good, Dr. Love. Sorry.
Yeah. So, whoops. So, I've been before you in the past and talked about sustainability quite a bit, and I talked about energy infrastructure as a relation to sustainability and really sustaining our planet and reducing our carbon output and such. And I also then came before you and talked about health and wellness and how that relates to sustainability and as a pillar of sustainability for health and wellness of our students and our staff. So, tonight, following that presentation, I'm here to talk about fiscal sustainability. So, fiscal sustainability, just a couple of points of what it means to me, is leveraging district resources for maximum effect on student experience, planning for future savings and decreased budget volatility, and to alleviate pressure on academic programs. So, if I can, from my end of the organization, maintain and actually improve our facilities here while not increasing my budget or even decreasing it, I can take pressure off of the academic programs, which, as you all know, is very important to me. So, in my approach to facilities and projects, I use some tools that I've developed over my career, and here they are. And then, I'm going to go over a few of the projects that I've done, we've done recently, and we're in the process of doing, and you'll see some of these tools at work with those projects. So, utilizing the skill sets of existing staff, our staff is very talented. We have our custodial grounds crew. They can do carpentry work, light plumbing, things like that, and they really can do a lot of handyman-type work. So, using their skills, I can avoid hiring out private companies and just get it done internally with our existing staff, which relates to insourcing work. That's what I call insourcing work, taking work back into the district and not paying out and paying into their profits. Collaborating, this is why I'm running around every day, talking with folks. It's never small talk. It's always trying to collaborate and understand what impacts any changes I'm going to make or going to have on different constituencies and different stakeholders in the district. And creating efficiencies, you'll see that throughout, and repurposing or auctioning. So, here are some of the projects I'm going to go over, fiscal sustainability in action, some recently completed and ongoing projects. And here's a list, I'm not going to go through it, because I'm going to go through it one at a time. Our energy performance contract here, it's finally complete as of September, October. The windows were done on the elementary schools, major, the last major piece that was completed. And we had some tweaking on our HVAC system that was still underway, but now it's time to measure. And I know I was on the board when we talked about this thing, and we promised some savings to pay for the bond and then savings on going after. So, now, what I'm doing is analyzing the actual data and seeing what the results are as far as the savings and real money savings that we need from this project. So, the EPC promised, and I'm measuring, significant oil reduction at the use in the elementary school and a substantial reduction in electric use district-wide. So, the budget impacts that I'm seeing right now look like they'll be between $150,000 and $200,000 a year in annual savings. And I'll show you some data to back that up in a minute. And also, by reducing this oil use and reducing the electric use, this will in the future take the sting out of volatility in oil and electric costs. If oil prices double, it would, our savings are double, you know, same with electric. And we, you know, so, and that's, you know, a risk to long-term budgets. So, here is the electric use, and I thought the most, the best data to look at was the last six months of last year, because that's when everything was fully in place for the electric use changes here from the EPC. And I compared the electric usage in the last six months of last year to that same six-month period in previous years. And you could see, the blue is the elementary school, red's the middle school, yellow's the high school. That little green thing is the transportation building, because it almost goes away. And then, the total six-month expense is the orange. And you can see we've gone from, you know, $200,000 in this six-month stretch in 2016 and about the same in 2017, a little higher in 2018. And the average of those three years, that six-month expense, was $203,020. And the expense district-wide for the same period And the expense district-wide for the same period this year or last year, from July to December, was $133,000. So that's a $69,000 savings in our electric costs for that six-month period. I don't know yet, and I'm going to continue, don't, don't take these as like, okay, that's what it's going to be. You know, we have to measure this over time. And there's still some work I'm doing on, on making sure the, the solar panel production is recognized by NICE and that we're getting, we're getting the benefit of that. And I'm doing that comparison. And of course, there's seasonality. And, and I don't think we produce a lot of solar in the last three weeks as the sun hasn't been out. So, but, but I think we can estimate that it's going to, this, we're going to realize based on present electric costs, about a $140,000 a year savings on, on electricity. Here's the, the oil. This, this is hot off the presses today. So I thought that the, since the windows were just completed, I thought the best data for me to look at was going five months back. I didn't want to go back into the summer because we don't use any oil in the summer. I just, so I went back to September 13th to today and took that five-month period and compared that against the five-month period from 2018, 19 and 2017, 18, the same exact five-month period. And I know there's variables as far as weather and, and all that, but, but here are the numbers. And you can see, I like this trend. I hope you guys do too. So I think it will level out a little bit, but we're, we're seeing, you can see this 2018, 19, we were in the, we're in the process of changing the things over. So you saw some reduction, but, but you're going to see, and 2019 and 2020 is a nice, you know, $20,000 savings over the 2017, 18 period of September 13th through February 12th, so.
That's exciting stuff, right?
That is very exciting.
Dave, on, on this piece, I know part of the, the contract, they have numbers. They essentially promised numbers as far as what it is. When do we start? Is that an annual number that they have to, we have to match in order for?
They, they have promised us to do an annual, annual review where they look at the data. I'm kind of anxious, so I'm jumping the gun a little bit. They want to see it, they want to see more data than they do an annual review. And I think they do that three years out so that they can confirm the data they looked at.
Because it's guaranteed savings from them. And if they don't make it, we get to refund on the difference, right?
That's what I said on the phone the other day. I said, there's guaranteed savings, so we better see it. So yeah, right. So the, another project that we worked on that nobody sees, I don't go in this locker room hardly at all. But the high school locker rooms here were, were 20 years old. And they've been beat on by, I don't want to just blame football players and lacrosse players, but they've been beat on, bad games or whatever. And, and we had a really, they were a wreck. The lockers were, it was sad. They were destroyed down there. So I talked with, with Brian Burrow and really wanted to, to renovate those locker rooms. And of course, I don't want to spend the money to renovate the locker rooms and none of us do. So I met, and this is the collaboration, you know, I really worked with the, the coaches, the, the gym teachers. I worked with, with Brian Burrow extensively and with the custodians and talked about what we can do, what's appropriate now. And they felt like a lot of the lockers were no longer being used the same way they were 20 years ago. And the, the stuff, the lacrosse stuff that's so popular here and baseball stuff and football stuff doesn't fit in any of the lockers. So what we did was we, we removed all of the broken, unrepairable lockers. We created some, some like coaching areas, as you can see here. And we put, you can see hooks on the walls. That's to hang those bags full of those big things that don't fit in the lockers. So this is just a sample of what we've done. And the lockers that were still in good shape and salvageable, we moved those and replaced some really tiny lockers that nobody ever uses anymore. So we renovated, repurposed and really for the price, and it was actually Brian Mansfield and Jay Gibbs, who just, you know, they, like I said, they have skills. They, they helped me design it and, and they, for the price of a few of these wood benches, we had significant locker room renovations done, all three locker rooms, in a way locker room boys and girls. And took care of that for really just elbow grease and a few, a few benches.
That's great.
Another project you've all hopefully noticed out there is really we've, we've taken the athletic entrance up to a higher standard aesthetically. And here we use a combination of our local, of our custodial grounds keepers and some local contractors, that stuff that was beyond their capabilities and time or expertise we had to, to job out. So the wellness trail, the wellness trailhead sign, I'm sorry, that's, that's someone's seeing me on TV and saying, you're doing great.
You're doing great, Dave.
It was me. So the wellness trail, trailhead sign, this, we, we took a repurpose, this old case from down, I found down in the middle school basement, and we built it around that. So that's theirs. That was free. And then we just bought some wood and some shingles and these, these guys built it and, and painted it and all that. We did some plantings that they did, of course. And then that, when everything else looked nice, of course, it's like some you do in your house, then all of a sudden that shed that was out there looked like heck. So we, we had our guys re-site that. We went to Home Depot and got siding for $400 and were able to, to, to make that thing look, look brand new again. And then the outdoor learning patio that, that you've all seen out there, that was contracted out along with the wood guardrails and the, we don't do asphalt. So in anticipation of the, the capital project, we needed some more parking spaces. So we created about eight spaces out there. And so we got it done relatively, very inexpensively. It looks like, wow, we did a big project here. But we did it for, for as little as we, we could possibly do it for. The, the wellness trail, I recognize somebody in the audience, isn't it? Anyway, the wellness trail.
Need dark glasses.
Has been a big hit here. It's, it's used constantly by the, the faculty, by students educationally. They, they bring classes out there. And it's been really rewarding for, for our staff and myself to, to see how well-received our, our hard work in the, in that trail is. So we, we did all the cutting, clearing and leveling ourselves. The Scott and James and Nick built these split rail fences that you see out there. We, we built bridges and the woodchips that were laid down to make the, to take the trips off the, the path were, were donated by the, the town. So there was no expense. The, the total expense of the whole project for us was, was $8,550. The, when, when this was planned as part of the capital project, we planned to build a cross-country trail and, and they budgeted $200,000 in, in the capital project for it. And, and another thing I'm trying to do is, is take some heat off of that capital project so that we, to reduce the scope so that we could have the best chance of, of getting that, that done. So I know it was a budget, it was $200,000, but the, the savings according to their budget and in my actual costs were $191,451.
You're doing great, Dave.
That's exciting, right?
Send him a text.
So the, the elementary school upper field, here we had the geothermal put in last year. And it created some drainage issues up there that caused us not to be able to use that field, which is very distressing because we have a shortage of field space here. And, but it was a perfect use for our new, our, our new backhoe. And this, this backhoe was purchased, really the, I, I always like to have a financial justification for any, any purchases. What, what it's going to do to save us over the long term. So this, we, we had been renting this skid steer, it looked like a little bobcat out there. Because of the way our, our parking lot is, is constructed with the hill and the school, our, our snow piles up in one end. We need something to move it, really to lift it and move it into huge piles. And we rented this skid steer for about, for $10,000, actually $9,800. I rented it up to $10 per year, every year. So, so I brought that, that information to Jill and, and asked her if we could replace that skid steer rental with an actual purchase of, of a backhoe, which we did. And now also we have 72 acres here of sport field and everything else. And we, we found that we were very often outsourcing site work, digging and, and things like that. So now, now we do that for free because we have this wonderful new backhoe. And, and we have actually five people on my staff that can operate it. And that doesn't include Dr. Love. He makes six.
Is this a goal of yours?
Being trained. The other piece is, since it has officially stopped snowing in the Hudson Valley, that this thing actually offers us.
Yeah.
Some versatility that this skid steer that was only designed to push snow around would be sitting there collecting dust the last couple of years.
That's right. And I, and there was also, I talked about the, the, the lack of field space. There's not a lot of flat space in Hudson Valley, as we all know. And there's a lot of demand for field space. And Dr. Love and I were looking at this elementary school field about a year, a year, a little more than a year ago. And it's shaped almost like an iron. It's shaped like this. And, and we said, well, what if we could like straighten that out and expand that field out there? So an opportunity struck when we passed the bond for, for the wellness center. It's going to require us digging a bunch of dirt up. So we're going to take the fill from the wellness center and we're going to try to fill in those back corners and try to expand this field. And I've been doing a lot of, people see me out there walking around a lot. I've been doing a lot of measuring. And I think we, we, we may even be able to create three playable fields that, that now is one. And this backhoe will also come in handy to do that, to, to move that fill and level it out.
You get very, very excited about this, Mr. Spittle.
Mr. Spittle has to do Troy.
And this is, when I talked about efficiencies here, the arrival dismissal changes with the, here at the high school, middle school campus, I know a lot of you will remember when we had the, the two schools arriving and dismissing together, it created a lot of issues. And last year I was out there every morning, stressed out of my mind because we had children getting out of cars in, in front of buses. And it was very difficult. And, and beginning, I know Barbara was out there with us helping. We had about 10 people out there making sure the kids were safe. And so I would talk with, with mostly Dan Muri because he seems like to be a traffic savant out there. And, and by the end of last year, we came up with a plan. And, and it worked like crazy. So, you know, the, we, we switched it so that the buses ride in the other lane and move in front of the middle school and unload. And it's been, you know, it's a little things. Almost miraculous is how much safer it is. And, and an operation that we used to be able to, we used to have 10 people, then we had eight. And we really could get it done with, with six or so safely at the end of last year. This year, if Dan's the only one here, it's fine. We could get it done with one person. Just, just in that place where the buses and, and, and traffic cross. The other two positions out there are really for, for traffic flow and a little added safety. So we have three people out there in the morning now. You'll see me filling in from time to time. And at dismissal, the dismissal was like likewise a chaotic mess with 1,000 people trying to leave at the same time through a single exit where seniors are backing into the exit. So after analyzing it over and over and looking at it, had a lot of different ideas. And one of them is sketched on the bottom here. And, and really, you know, thinking about the staging area for the, the capital project being, taking 44 spaces away from a middle school parking, I, I knew that we had to plan for a dismissal that was more efficient. So lots of ideas, but the one magic idea that, that actually worked was in collaborating with, with the, the principals and, and asking the administrators here to, to change the schedule for the seniors. And we're letting them out four minutes early. And we're doing the announcements at the end of the day. And it's like night and day. Instead of everybody fighting to get out, we help the seniors back out, which will be better even next year. But we help the seniors back out safely. And then they, then Officer Muri goes down and, and releases them at the light and, and it flows beautifully out of here. And there's a lot less stress, no more fender vendors and people, it flows nicely and I, I like it. Safety and security, I'm not going to talk a lot about this here, but know that I, we are working on it. After we changed the configurations of the schools to have a single point of entry with a holding area in the front of every school that I was working on last year with, with all, with, with all that actual construction work. Now, behind the scenes with protocols and procedures and trainings, we're, we're doing a lot of work that I'm not going to talk about. And, but also know that, that my, my concern is that, that I want to scare the kids. So I want it to be welcoming and I want these, these, I don't, I don't want our legacy to be that our kids lived in fear, even though they were safer. So I, 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 I really kind of see safety through absolutely physical safety. Every protocol we can put in place that makes sense, that is, that is the right practice to do, we do it. But beyond that, I, I always have in mind that, that I want our kids to feel safe and welcome. HVAC, this is not the most fun subject in the world for me to talk about. All that other stuff has been kind of fun. But when I, in the year prior to my taking the position here and, and since our HVAC budget was exploding well beyond what we had planned for. And it seemed like every day they'd come in and say, well, here's another $38,000 you need to spend because this thing is gone or that thing is gone. So my, first I had to learn about what the heck it, it looks like here, right? And then I, then I did a, a serious analysis of our HVAC system. I'll give you the, the, the short version here is that we have a geothermal system on this campus that doesn't use any oil, which is great. But what it does is because it uses the groundwater and, and that, that 56-degree water in the aquifer to, to heat and, and cool, we take the energy from that. It requires a whole system of, of water pumps and heat pumps and compressors and to move the water and move the air around. And there are actually 168 pieces of equipment in this building and next door that are all 20 years old. And the life expectancy is 15 years. So that's why we see these things failing at a rapid rate. Now, you know, Pat had, had brought the company, hired a company to do some preventive maintenance and, and to really start working on, on this so that we could extend the life of these things. And, and I asked for this analysis. And it was, it was, it was, it's better to know what's out in front of you than the, than this black cloud. You don't know when the lightning's going to strike, you know? And, and it was like looming over me, stressed out about, I don't know, I don't, it's bad, I don't know how bad. So this allowed, this analysis of every piece of equipment and the disposition of each allowed me to get a really good handle on that. And I'm working on some ways to extend the life and to, to get these replaced less expensively. So I'm working hard on that. The analysis is just done. But this is one, one of the reasons why I fought so hard to get $400,000 worth of HVAC work done with the capital project. And we're replacing all of the units that, that heat and cool. That whole non-academic side of the middle school is being done with that. And then there's, there's other things. But I, I thought you guys should know. But we are working hard on it. And we're working on creative ways to, to see how we can finance that ongoing. So enough with the HVAC, doom and gloom. So another thing that we've started doing in the last year, and Maureen Pedersen has, has helped me a great deal with this and our new mechanic, Ryan, is we, we take all these old equipment that's no longer being used. um, is we, we, we take all these old equipment that's no longer being used, and instead of having it sit and rot, uh, until we can junk it, we're, uh, putting it on these new, these auction sites, uh, to auction them off. And, and we've, uh, auctioned off a riding mower, a turf sweeper. This was, uh, a sweeper that was purchased to sweep the old turf, that was that carpet type turf, and was no longer useful. Uh, we got seven hundred dollars for that. Um, a school bus, a big one, and, uh, three vans, uh, our Ford truck that was really in bad shape, it didn't, didn't work, and a Suburban. Uh, we sold them at auction, we got revenue. I know it's a little, little piece compared to what we talked about before, but eighty-five, fifty-five in revenue in. Good stuff. And we don't have those junky things sitting around. Uh, so, this is the, uh, the more traditional part of my budget presentation, is just to tell you what the staffing is. I don't anticipate any increases to staffing. Um, you know, here it is, there's seven, you know, there's, uh, you can see, there's a thirty-seven, uh, point five, or point four, um, people in, in my, under my jurisdiction, along with a transportation contract, uh, that has, uh, twenty buses and six minivans. Uh, these are contractual expenses, uh, that include utilities, fuel, safety, all that. I'm not going to read through all this, you've seen the, these, this before. Um, you know, basically, we, we, we buy a lot of things through Bosie's Services, and, and we try to add as many things to that as possible, anything that, that comes up. These are, you know, creative, because we get, uh, we get state aid there. Uh, we buy our fuel oil on, on state contract, we get the lea... The lowest price. A lot of the, this squeezing of our budget was done in two thousand nine, when we were in, in that, that crisis there. You know, this, this was work that was done then, and, and, and there's, I, I, I wish I could tell you, there's a lot of room left here to squeeze, uh, but, but we are very efficient in, in the way we, we purchase, uh, things and, and bid things out to get low, low prices on, on everything we can. So, uh, materials and supplies. Again, most materials and supplies are purchased through the Bosie's Cooperative thing. Unfunded mandates, I was typing this slide, I thought of Val Fitzgerald here, because she's bringing up a lot. But these are some I have to deal with this year, uh, from my end of the organization. A five-year capital plan, I'm going to try to leverage that to have them help, help, uh, plan some things out, some, oh, lead testing that we have to do every five years, and this asbestos testing that is every six months. And, um, shared transportation services, we've been doing this for a while, there's a, um, you, you folks, um, voted on a five-year agreement with the ten local school districts to try to, try to have shared services, and we utilize that as best we can, based on our geography, which it's not great, but we do the best we can with it. Transportation expenses, and, and these are the standard ones you've seen before. Uh, we, we do, uh, just for the public, we, we, we buy our gasoline, uh, diesel for our buses at the, through the town and get their, the, a really low price. Based on that, we get the state contract price on that. Any questions?
I have a, this is probably a question that's not even for us, more for our contractor, and I, given who our contractor is for busing. Is there any, uh, thoughts, and I'm imagining the answer's going to be no, migration to either natural gas or mixed fuel, uh, for transportation?
You know, I'd love to look at that. You know, I know there's been some, some districts that even, uh, you know, have, uh, electric, uh, fleets. You know, right now, um, you know, with a, with a blended, uh, contracting out to East End and ours, you know, it's, I, I think it's something to look at for next year. And, and I'd, I'd love to, to research that and see, uh, I'd love, I'd love to have our, our buses pollute less. So, I think it's, it, it feels like it's, from what I've read, a little cost prohibitive, you know, right now, but I'd like to look at it anyway.
Okay.
Anything else?
No. Very thorough.
Okay. Thank you.
You did a good job, Gary. Send you a text.
You can go collect your texts now.
[laughing]
Travis is, uh, I think he's...
I'll wait and see.
It's a secret? Like, what is it?
You're right.
So, our next presentation will be given by Travis McCarty, our middle school principal. Um, this presentation is going to cover some changes we're proposing to our middle school science program. Before he begins, I just want to recognize that, um, although he is presenting, uh, this information, that this, um, decision was made collectively with science teachers from the middle school, as well as science teachers from the high school, and the administrators from both buildings, as well as district office personnel, to come together to look at the standards and examine, uh, and make a determination, what was the best way to move forward for our students. And I think that's sort of the premise that's behind, uh, everything that Mr. McCarty will talk about. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Travis McCarty. I have the privilege of being the principal of Putnam Valley Middle School. Um, I'm just here to present on, uh, our shift from Earth Science for All into Science Eight and implementing the New York State Science Learning Standards in grades five through eight. So our shift, uh, currently, all of our eighth grade science students, uh, earn a Regents' credit and take Earth Science, which is one of our physical sciences. Um, our shift to Science Eight actually covers a lot of different science areas, and if you're a scientist or, or a science person, you kind of know that, um, they're not really connected by what's offered. So they kind of stand alone. Um, but with Science Eight, it spirals. So, we integrate the New York State Science Learning Standards. It covers physical sciences, life sciences, earth and space sciences, which is a part of Earth Science, engineering and design. And through all of this balance, it provides a foundation for all of our sciences. Um, and this will spiral in grades six through eight. So this is a, just a visual for you. Um, the next generation's science standards cover disciplinary core ideas, cross-cutting concepts, and science and engineering practices. So these are just a few, uh, visuals of a design to inspire thinkers. And, you know, asking questions, defining problems, developing and using models, planning carryout investigations, analyze and interpret data, use mathematical and computational thinking, uh, construct explanations and design solutions, engage in argument from evidence, and, uh, obtain, evaluate, and communicate information. So, this is what scientists do. And the cross-cutting concepts are a key feature to these new standards. So why the shift now? It's actually an interesting question. Um, one of our staff members, Maria Bradfield, um, came to us about four or five years ago, and she, she's a forward thinker, and she saw these changes in the standards coming. And we were working meticulously to integrate these standards. And in fact, we do integrate some of these standards in grades, um, six, seven, and Science Eight. Um, but our Earth Science Regents has yet to adopt the full new standards yet. So the New York State Science Learning Standard Curriculum is designed to provide students with foundational knowledge and skills. They'll need to be successful in current, and more importantly, future Regents exams in science. The model supports heterogeneous groupings of students across eighth grade. Um, we noticed that last year, when we had Science Eight and then Earth Science, that, um, it became a tracked program. So then we took the leap toward Earth Science for All, and we have found that it has been, um, a challenge developmentally. So in other words, we're not sure if some of our students are there yet. Um, but they could eventually, um, take Earth Science in the high school again if they would like. The recommendation is being made only after working closely with middle school and science, uh, teachers at the high school and administration, and it will have no impact on students' ability to pursue the highest levels of science. Um, they will still be able to pursue an IB diploma or certificate. We anticipate many other schools across New York State considering this change, and a similar move away from Regents at the middle school level science courses. Some examples of local schools are Briar Cliff, Harrison, and Somers. So a shift to the standards, um, again, in the near future, our high school Regents exams will be shifting to these new standards. Um, it addresses the how and the why, as opposed to just the facts. And students are encouraged to think critically and investigate like a scientist. And, very importantly, in alignment with IB philosophy, which is in, enquirers, knowledgeable, reflective, and thinkers. So what are the, some of the pathways that our, our children can take? So, if we go Science Eight, which is our, our proposal, um, they'll have the physical sciences, life sciences, earth and space sciences, engineering, design that's spiraled. And then in ninth grade, they can all take living environment. Tenth grade, chemistry and/or Earth Science. Eleventh grade, take a look at the options, chemistry and/or AP Physics, and/or Physics Honors, and/or Earth Science, and/or electives. And then twelfth grade, IB Chemistry, IB Bio, IB Environmental Systems, Chemistry, AP Physics, Physics Honors, and/or Earth Science or electives. And Ms. Entriari was great in collaborating with this. This can all be found on the PVHS course catalog on page thirty-eight. When I went there, it's amazing, all the pathways that students can truly take, um, you know? And one of those electives actually includes science research. So the graduation requirements, um, really haven't changed in quite some time. Uh, for science, there's still three credits. Um, one, science Regents examination passed, so living environment, um, chemistry, Earth Science, physics. And then a re... Advanced Regents diploma just states that they need three science credits. Um, two of them need to be Regents exams passed, one must be living environment, um, and then, you know, living environment, Earth Science, uh, chemistry and physics. And again, all that can be found on page four of the high school course catalog, which is found right on our high school website. So here, um, do we have audio? Dan?
No. Tell me ahead.
Okay. That's okay. So here, this will be posted, this will be posted.
I'll put the microphone next to the computer.
All right. This is a, a theoretical physicist from Columbia University, Brian Green, and he talks a little bit about the shifts to the standards. And I'll play it as loud as I can.
Like a life without, like a life without literature, or art, or music, or theater. A life without science, yes, it can be fulfilling, but it is bereft of something that gives experience a rich and otherwise inaccessible dimension. I mean, think about it. Through the power of thought, through the power of calculation, we have been able to figure out how stars shine, how black holes form, how space expands, how time elapses. We've been able to peer back to a mere fraction of a second after the beginning to try to understand how the universe began. We have pried apart the atom and been able to understand its constituents with absolutely fantastic precision. This is fantastic material. This is material to die for. And yet, if it's taught in a way that we usually teach it, where we focus in so quickly on the details in order to get kids to be able to, you know, solve the equation, know the parts of the cell, balance the reaction, without a commensurate focus on the big wondrous ideas, the ideas that get us up in the morning and want us to go to work, what we do is we leave science lifeless. And what we do is we create another generation that goes out into the world and basically thinks, "Science, eh, it's just a subject in school. It's best left to the scientists. It's material that I can simply leave behind when I cross the threshold of the science lab for the last time." And that's the vital thing that we need to change.
Very, very dramatic.
So, uh, just to summarize a little bit about what Brian Green is speaking of, these cross-cutting principles are within our standards. So, a lot of people say, "Oh, Earth Science, you know, it's advanced science. Science Eight, it's just something that the rest of the population takes." That could be nothing more than a fallacy. In fact, Science Eight is as rigorous or even more rigorous than Earth Science, and it covers all of the sciences. And I think that is so powerful, you know, in speaking to local schools about their Science Eight program, and how intense, and all of the, um, material that is out there now, which is integrating these standards. This new assessment is going to come to us next year, and we are preparing our students to be thinkers. Um, some of the materials that they shared with us is, is thinking about the population of the animals around us and taking that and applying it to, how do we control population in the future? And, you know, through this, I think that we are going to develop scientists and kids that continue learning about science, and kids that question the world around us. And, you know, attached to this presentation, I'm not going to show it, but Maria Bradfield, who is, um, she's a forward thinker. She has seen this coming for a number of years and is ecstatic in supporting this, um, had prepared a fifty-five-page, um, presentation for Dr. Wills a few years ago, which I can share with all of you. Um, you can take a look at it on your own time. But it really talks about this change in the standards and preparing our students, uh, for their own future. Any questions?
Go first.
No. You can go first.
How are you getting this information out to parents?
Sure. So, uh, we actually spoke about it at our listening hour, um, here through our board presentation, and then we'll have a communication that goes out in the spring, um, which will be shared with our, our public. The fact that we're moving toward the standards, we're spiraling it, and Earth Science will be an option at the high school level.
Travis, was there any conversation about, because I know you mentioned some schools are moving to doing eighth grade. A lot of schools also moved to living environment in eighth grade. Um, I would say a good number, the Westchester Schools, Rocklands, I think all of the Rockland Schools are doing living environment, which is the one required Regents. Any conversation about that instead of eight?
Sure. Actually, we had an in-depth conversation with our science department regarding it. Um, the discussion came around personnel. Um, the discussion also came around, which I think is vital, that living environment has not yet integrated the new science learning standards. So, if we wait and, you know, all of our students are more prepared in ninth grade, and they have the foundation in six, seven, and eight, they will even be better prepared for taking that living environment. In fact, there's a community member here who teaches over at, uh, Blue Mountain, and I've been discussing this with her for years. And she stated that they get it in seventh, and then they continue in eighth. But the hard conversations that her department has been having is, if we offer that in seven and eight, we're not providing our kids with the foundation of these standards to be prepared for the sciences of the future. So, yes, quote unquote, we get that science out of the way, but is that our goal? Or is our goal to develop thinkers who have this foundation to then want to go even further? Um, you know, I don't bring this up often, but my sister got her doctorate in analytical chemistry. And she took all the sciences that she could in high school because she was interested in it. My hope is that by building this foundation, we inspire more scientists to take more sciences. And I think if you look at the data, we might see that the kids take the sciences and then they're done. So they get their credits and then they're done. We want to really develop these, um, science researchers who really want to learn more about the world. And that's really the foundation that we're looking for here. And I'm very hopeful that this will help inspire those kids to go further with their sciences.
Well, and our science research numbers have exploded, even with the current way we do it. I have concerns about perception, uh, two things, concerns about perception and concerns about, um, practice. My perception concerns is, we have put a lot of energy into IB and a lot of resources and a lot of money into increasing our rigor at the high Concerns about perception and concerns about, um, practice. My perception concerns is, we have put a lot of energy into IB, and a lot of resources and a lot of money into increasing our rigor at the high school. And I understand that a Science Eight curriculum could be rigorous. It will look like we're taking a Regents opportunity away from our eighth grade. And, do we want our children to have their first Regents be in ninth grade? I, I think there is something to be said for that practice, especially now that so many students are opting out of the eighth grade and, and, you know, three-to-eight tests. They need that practice of a three-hour rigorous exam. Um, I, I think we're doing them a disservice, waiting until ninth grade for that.
I think we need to be careful, though. Some of it, we do have a population of students that take Algebra I. And we also have a population of students that get their checkpoint A. Actually, all of our students getting their checkpoint A in Spanish.
Spanish, right.
And Mandarin Chinese. So it's not like we don't have those opportunities. Just because they're not there in science, doesn't mean that we don't have a population of students that are exposed to Regents.
That's true, that's true. But, I mean, I've been in, around in the district. I remember, when I worked in the school, there were only two sections of Earth science. And there was a "you" and cry that that wasn't enough. So then we went to most sections of, of, and then, of course, we overcorrected and said "all." I, I don't necessarily believe in "all," because there are a number of students who simply don't have the executive functioning, the organizational skills, um, to take that on, and the level of stress in the world of anxiety can be too much. But, I, I'm not entirely sure that the answer is no Regents in eighth grade. It's just, you know.
Yeah, and I think what's important is to go a couple of years back, when we did have, you know, three or four sections of Earth science, and two sections of Science Eight. Unfortunately, it became a tracked program. And if you were to walk into any of those classes, um, there were behavioral issues and needs. And, I think it was a disservice to those that were looking forward to, um, learning more about science. So, yeah, there's, there's pros and cons both ways, for sure.
I just want to reiterate a couple of points. The, um, this shift is not about watering down curriculum or making less rigorous learning opportunities for students. This shift is one hundred percent about providing students with the foundation they need to be successful in their other sciences. We had a very interesting meeting, and we had a regional expert come in, and he was sharing some of the, of the standards that students are expected to know for that eighth grade assessment and moving forward. And as he read the standards, the room full of science teachers jaws dropped, and they were looking at each other. And we quickly realized that the standards in which he was sharing that were going to be on this test and considered to be prerequisite knowledge moving forward are not taught anywhere within our existing curriculum. Because we're essentially teaching the Common Core, or the, the next-generation science standards, or New York's version of the next-generation science standards, all the way through seventh grade. But then in eighth grade, when all the students take Earth science, we're missing an entire year of content that students are expected to know. So the fear is, moving forward, these changes are moving forward into the Regents. So those changes will take into account the fact that the Regents expect the students to have this knowledge before they come into the high school. So, if we continue with an eighth-grade Regents exam, regardless of whether it's Earth science or living environment, and we certainly can make arguments one way or the other, I still believe we're doing a disservice to students moving forward by not providing them the foundation. And there's a lot of research out there that shows, eighth grade's Earth science for all, you can pull students through, right? It's, you can teach them enough about the test and how to read the reference tables, and you can get them to pass it. But you're certainly not developing a love of science for those kids that struggle every day to get through that Regents, to get a sixty-eight, and yeah, they get their credit, but now they hate science. And that's certainly not what we want of our students in the middle school. Right? We want them to develop a love of science to move forward and to prepare them to be successful. The nice part about the sciences is because they all sort of stand alone by themselves, this has absolutely no impact on a student's ability to continue to the highest levels of science. And, um, something that was interesting that came up during these conversations is we found out that Earth science as a standalone subject is like New York State only. And no other state is Earth science considered a standalone course. And, I, I know we've considered splitting it, but to Travis's point before, and, and I'll, I'll certainly take one hundred percent of the blame for it, when we were looking at those classes of the two or three sections of Earth science, we had zero classified students in those sections, which meant every classified student was then squeezed into two sections of Science Eight. So, even though it was pitched, it was explained, as you can take either one, they're comparable, it was never meant to become a tracked program. It was meant to be, you choose which one is, is more exciting to you. That was not a reality, and we quickly realized that we're, we're not large enough to run a split program like that, because it's inevitable that we're going to end up tracking students, and then it's certainly not a level playing field for each. Yeah, when we reached out to other districts, there were several districts that came right out and said, "Our eighth-grade science course is more challenging than our Earth science Regents course." And I believe there's truth behind that, having taught Earth science. It's, eh, I think we can make it more exciting, we can make it more meaningful, and we can make it just as rigorous moving forward. And I think that's certainly our hope.
Can we just get a little, I mean, I know we have lots of time before budgets are approved, but I'd like some data on what our region results among eighth graders have been, both before it was everybody and after, if possible? And, um...
Well, this is our, it's our first year with everyone, right?
Yeah.
And how many, I thought it was only one section, was it two?
Previously?
Yeah.
I think we had at least two, if not three.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Last year, this year we have, this is the first year we're doing Earth science for all.
Three sections, two years ago.
And how many section of Earth science then? Three?
Three.
Three and three? Okay, okay, I realize, I didn't realize that. I was under the impression that it was close to five, if not more, of Earth science, and then the one section of not, so, okay. Uh, and I am uncomfortable that, I, I work in a school that has living environment. We have eleven kids not, in the whole school. And our highest, uh, our, our special ed results in living environment are extraordinary. Because they are mixed with high-achieving students, and they are heterogeneous. So, um, I'll say that I have a bias, I, I will admit it, but I, you know I'm open-minded, Travis. So, can we also have a little bit of an assessment of where the count, where the surrounding area is? Does BOCES present that? Who's doing what, where, when?
So, we reviewed a chart, actually, we did a survey, or someone did a survey, um, of the area of where they are, and it's truly a mix. There's some districts, and I know Travis shared some of the names, there's some really high-performing districts that offer, and high-perform, like Harrison stands out to me because they're the largest IB school. Um, and they, they run eighth-grade science for all, and have for a couple of years. So, from an IB standpoint, we know they have, I mean, almost two hundred IB diploma candidates. So by, obviously, having eighth-grade science for all has no impact on their students' ability to move forward with IB. Somers is making the, the shift right now. We know other districts are sort of in the same boat, maybe not ready to act as quickly. But I know that Travis had mentioned Hen Hood is considering making the move. I, I, I would bet a large sum of money that in the next three or four years, you'll see a drastic shift of districts away from Regents in eighth grade to, uh, eighth-grade science for all.
And one, one argument for us is, um, we have a very high graduation rate. I know that some of the schools that move to the, that will probably stick to the eighth-grade Regents is, they're trying to get kids Regents to get them the credits, because they're, they go to work. There's a high bilingual population that goes to school until they're sixteen, and then don't anymore because they have to work. So, that, that's a lot of argument for some districts to have that Regents in the eighth grade. We, as of now, do not have that demographic in, in this community. Something we have to look at. I know our "you" population has tripled in fifteen years, but they're still very small, but it has tripled, so it's something we have to look at.
Can you talk more about the spiraling, please?
Sure. Um, so the spiraling involves, and I can go back, actually, to the, to what spiraled. So, starting in grade six, actually, we're doing Science Twenty-One right now in grade five. Um, and we have a staff member that's going to go, um, in the spring and over the summer to write curriculum, where they are integrating the new science learning standards to Science Twenty-One in grade five. In grades six, seven, and eight, um, they integrate the standards. And these are the sciences that they are working on. And what we did was, about four years ago, we took all the standards and we put them on little cards, and we divided them up into the certain grade levels. And the grade levels talked about which standards they would address more heavily than others. And that's the way that it's woven back in, they go deeper. So, in sixth grade, they will touch upon these in a lighter fashion than in seventh grade, and then eighth grade, they're more analytical and go deeper. So that's the work that we started. Um, and really, what they're saying is, you always have the end in mind. So, uh, the difficult part right now is, until the assessment comes out, we won't know exactly the way that that is worded, or the way that those standards are addressed. So what we're working on right now is looking at all these, all this work that's put out online, all of the knowledge of our consultants, and we're taking their word for it in how we are teaching these standards, and the way we're instructing it, and the way that we're assessing it. So, the work is in the curriculum that we're developing. And actually, I'm working very closely with, uh, Ms. Mastrata, who, um, is working with BOCES in getting our teachers the, uh, curriculum planning that they need, because this work isn't finished. This work is ongoing. And that's the way we're weaving in and spiraling, uh, these standards and these, these topics within the sciences.
And so the idea is that all pieces of this, with different components, will be integrated throughout each of the years, just getting more and more complex each year.
Absolutely. And in fact, if you talk to Maria Bradfield, she will tell you it cannot be done in grades six and seven. They must have aid as well, to go deep and to build that thorough foundation to prepare them for Earth science, living environment, chemistry, physics, IB. And, we've had long conversations about this shift.
So, in this, you actually have, um, a, um, the slide, a shift to the standards. And it talks about the shift to the "high" and the "wow," as opposed to just the "facts", and, and to think critically and investigate like a scientist. I mean, that should be where we are anyway. I mean, that, that's, that shouldn't be new.
Within the content of each course.
With whatever we're doing now. I mean, that should be present. Uh, uh, so I don't know that, I don't see how that represents a shift if we don't feel like we're doing that appropriately now.
Well, I think, I think it's geared more towards, when you're talking about Earth science, you're only talking about the physical sciences. So this digs deeper into, um, life sciences, Earth and space, I'm sorry, I should say Earth and space sciences. This digs more deeply into those other sciences and the cross-cutting principles. So it actually covers all of these areas, as opposed to just that isolated Earth science material. I think that's, that's where I was going with that.
So, I think this is the main shift. When you take Earth science, ninety-nine percent of what you're doing is memorizing content or figuring out how to use the reference table to find the answer to a question, right? You're not necessarily getting into philosophical discussions about landforms and impacts it had on, on, um, immigrants and, and...
But there's nothing to say you couldn't do that, right?
Well, just the fact that you have X curriculum to get through, and X number of days, and what'll be on the Regents, and that's sort of our, the sad reality of the Regents. I think the shift that the state is trying to make is away from sort of the skill-and-drill-recall-type Regents. And this new curriculum, maybe the most drastic difference is, where you used to do physical science in sixth grade, and life science in seventh grade, and Earth science in eighth grade. This is now, the way they teach science is not through content areas, it's through concepts. So maybe an example was in David Jacob, if he was watching for some bizarre reason, yell at me, because I made up these cross-cutting concepts, because I don't have them memorized. But, so, a cross-cutting concept could be something like relationships. And then, what the teacher would do, they would talk about all different types of relationships. Maybe relationships between planets, and how it creates a gravitational force, relationships between organisms, and how they communicate, or, or reproduce. Uh, relationships between chemicals, and how they react with each other. So that's sort of the type of cross-cutting concept, where you may learn about all those things in sixth grade. And then in seventh grade, when you visit, uh, chemicals, now rather than relationships, you talk about interactions, and you're balancing, um, equations and stoichiometry and stuff like that. Or, another one could be cause and effect, right? And then they have sort of examples of cause and effect across life sciences, physical sciences, space, or forces. So it, it doesn't sort of follow, um, what would be sort of a very vertical, sort of, "This is what you're learning today." It's a much broader look at the sciences, and sort of how they impact our lives. And that's the emphasis on the test. That new eighth, eighth-grade science test will not be, um, multiple choice. Well, I mean, there'll be multiple choice, but it won't be one hundred percent multiple choice. They're going to be, like, have to design and experiment, share, prove how you would, uh, how you would test for your hypothesis. Uh, where would you find? So it's, it's a very, it's a much more in-depth look at science from the view of a scientist, as opposed to, um, one's ability to memorize and look up applicable knowledge in a reference table.
So I guess some of my, one, a couple of my concerns are, what's up with the current sixth, seventh, and eighth grades? Because, this is not something that comes in and gets implemented overnight, and, uh, changing, you know, this happened when we put Common Core, it took years for it to actually take place and catch up to where the assessments were going to end up being. And this, similarly, you know, my, my concern is, I guess particularly for sixth and seventh graders now, where they're going to go into eighth grade, it's going to be very different than what, you know, in their mind, and their siblings before them have known. And, uh, just, you know, the idea of us being able to be ready to launch the whole thing at the same time, rather than maybe, and I don't know if you can phase them in, so that they, they follow up with the classes, and you kind of continue until you get to that point. I don't know if that's even something we want to even think about, or something that's doable. I feel that there might be the, um, overwhelm, kind of overwhelming to be able to get it right, since we don't even have the assessment yet, right? So, I mean, if you can talk, somebody can talk a little bit more about the implementation piece of this, and then, I, we do have a, a query from the audience as far as staffing issues that go along with it, if there are any staffing, uh, issues that go along with implementation.
Sure. So, I think the good news is, is these standards are already being taught in the elementary school, actually, through seventh grade. These are the standards that have been in place for...
Four years, five years.
Four or five years? I was looking for someone to give me the answer, and everyone just stared back at me. So, um, so the students who are coming in, our current third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders have been doing this science and, and meeting these standards for years. The state was very articulate in how they laid out these standards through fifth grade, which was very nice for those teachers. And then what they sort of did was just chunked together a whole bunch of standards, and said, "Well, six, seven, eight, you guys figure out the rest of this stuff." So, we're doing those things in sixth and seventh grade now. So the work that has to happen is for six, seven, eight to get together and sort of re-divide up the way it's going to, and come up with a transition. Now, we have, um, teachers on board to do this. We have consultants who are reaching out to support the work. I know Jeanette Mastrata spent hours with our regional science coordinator today, doing exactly this. And BOCES is putting together a cohort, because they recognize other schools are in the same place that we are. So they're actually creating a cohort of schools that are implementing, um, the next-gen science standards, six through eight. So they sort of have a collegial circle, other districts to work with. Our other piece is, I know we're scheduling visits to some of the districts that have been doing this for years. Um, we're certainly not ashamed to steal anything good that's working. So, we talked about Harrison and so many other districts that have been doing this for time, uh, for a long time, and really reaching in and seeing what's working well there, and how can we apply what they're doing to Putna Valley.
And then, you know, maybe this is more of a question, uh, for the high school, it, just the, the, the sequence here. And, I, I'm never a big fan of the "and ors" when it comes to anything, because I, I, it's... We're going to have the hardcore science students that want to dive in really deep with science, and probably wouldn't have any issue doubling up on some of these, these courses. But for the ninety percent that are, you know, not necessarily hardcore science people, but if they, you know, even if they're driven enough to want to get to what has been the pinnacle at this point of, of physics, they have to wait till senior year, if they go with the, the current sequence, as far as the traditional sequence, to include Earth science and all, all three, and then you kind of capstone with AP physics, and, or just regular physics, as opposed to the hardcore ones, the hardcore students that are going to really push to go into the IBs and the APs. I, I, I have concern with, um, and maybe it's just unfounded, but the idea of many students... students, I guess, feeling forced to have to take physics in senior year, which is not a bad thing to take an advanced science in senior year, but we know how seniors are. We know how seniors, a lot of seniors feel, the, the idea of, they're not gonna have a grade in physics by the time of applying for colleges. Because they're gonna be applying in October and December and they're gonna find out well before midterms. Uh, and I don't know if that is a hindrance of not having that physics, you know, final physics. And again, that's just me presuming that physics would be senior year. Um, but that, and that's not necessarily the case, but I just think that's kind of, it's gonna take a while for the tradition of that not to, to kind of follow through. So, you know, I'm just wait, raising that as a flag as far as how that weighs in on, 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 on that factor.
You wanna go back to that slide real fast? I just wanna be like 100% yeah, clear that no student will ever need to double up on sciences in order to reach those highest levels. It's an option, but no one, it's not a, it's not a prerequisite. In order to get to any of the IBs or things listed at the 12th grade, it doesn't require you to take two sciences in any one year. It's just an option for students who are really interested. So the most logical pathways for those two students are followed. So I think all students will take living environment in ninth grade. That's sort of the region's exam, that's the one they need for the advanced region's diploma. There, there's a lot, um, sort of, there's a lot of investment in that test being successful students. It's the one that they need for graduation. It's got a ridiculous curve on it which helps everyone. Um, sorry, I'm a little biased as a former physics teacher. We had, we had a negative curve. We had sixty-eight percent of the test right to get a sixty-five. Um, so then after ninth grade is then you really have, make a decision. So if you're, if you're a, a science student, you wanna go into a science field, your guidance counselor is 100% gonna say, you know what, you should take chemistry in 10th grade and then you could take physics in 11th grade and then you could take an IB, um, moving forward from there if you want. So that's sort of the logical track for students who really wanna go into the sciences. But you have other students who maybe they're more into humanities, but they still wanna have a well-rounded schedule and they wanna continue to move forward. So they may go living environment and then earth science and then chemistry and then physics, which is a much more traditional path. Uh, but there's lots of options. If, if you're a science student, you're gonna pursue sciences, but you really are into meteorology and you don't wanna miss out on earth science, you 100% could do earth science and delay everything else, or you can double up on here. So I think the point of this slide is to show that all the options that currently exist still exist moving forward. And with the exception of a student wanting willingly doubling up on two classes because of the content that they wanna absorb, it's never a requirement. So I don't want anyone who's watching at home to think, oh, of course it's possible, my kid's gotta take two sciences and two labs and it's gonna fill up their whole schedule and never have time. That's never gonna be a requirement. It's just an option for students who wanna do it, yeah.
Well, and something I can add to that as well. So don't get me wrong, we've touched base with Dr. Entriari, Mr. Mello, the science department, and my wonder and worry at the same time was just yours as well. You know, we had the three and two math program a few years ago.
Which is why I'm very concerned about this situation.
And, and listen, we learn from our past, right? So that's the first thing I said. Listen, is this gonna put our students behind? And Dr. Entriari and Mr. Mello absolutely gave us the support to say, no, this is not going to put you behind. They can still pursue IB, they still have that time. And, you know, it's with her reassurance that really helped me to not lose so much sleep at night because Dr. Luft will tell you, we have had numerous conversations about this because I want to afford our students the best education possible and we do think we're moving in that right direction.
And the high school math teachers, the high school principal and a multitude of parents never failed to remind me of the impact of the three-two, uh, math craze that lasted one year and the impact that had on students that are still in school today. And, and that was the first question we got from the high school and the teachers is if we're creating something that's gonna come back? And, and I could say with 100% certainty, because of the way the sciences operate, you don't have to follow that same logical progression through them, that there, that will absolutely not happen here. And I, we can again, point to some of our neighbors that have IB schools and have had eighth grade science for all as an example of, or proof that this model works well even within the rigors of an IB program.
So I, um, I came positioned and I've shifted a bit. Um, I do want, um, I do, I did, I came loaded for bear and I've definitely shifted a great deal, but I would want to talk about, you know, not necessarily now because I know you then have to go into the front of the budget, um, Mr. McCarty, um, what the evaluation, evaluative process is going to be. Um, you know, I know one of the only things we have are test scores. So, you know, if we see in two or three years their region's scores start declining, um, because we fixed something that wasn't necessarily broken, um, that's a concern of mine. So what would our evaluative process be?
So my hope with this is our region's scores actually improve.
That's right.
Because they're being exposed more foundationally to all the sciences. And I think our evaluation process will be two, three, four years down the line when these kids are eventually coming through the high school to see where they are. So it's really looking back to see how successful it is. And I think every year that we implement or continue to implement these standards and once that assessment comes out, you know, the more we will be able to align to it. And, uh, I think that's the work that we do. We reflect on our practice and we continue to refine it.
It stresses me out to no end that we had to wait, you know, ultimately we're waiting at least five years to find something out. And that, that, that is just, you know, we've, we've had a number of starts and stops on certain things that have had negative impacts and I just, I want everything put in place that this would not be one of those things that caused that. And especially since it bridges over two different schools, two different areas of responsibility. Um, and so, I mean, I know everybody has a vested interest in making sure that this works, um, but it's just gonna take a lot of teamwork, I think, between the schools. I think, I think, you know, you know, if this is a thing, visiting teachers from the, the content areas, specialists that are in this building, visiting into the other building for special sessions, I think that is something that can be helpful, um, as far as, and it's, it's not to disparage any of the qualifications of any teachers in the middle school, which is, I think it, it's a good thing for the one who's the special, specialist in some of these areas, and we're talking about these particular subcategories in science that, um, you know, kind of the visiting professor can, can make a difference.
I think too, our visitation to other schools. So, you know, reaching out to Harrison, reaching out to Briar Cliff and reaching out to Somers. Um, you know, I, I talk continuously with, uh, Mr. Getman at Somers Middle School and, uh, you know, he's, he's taking the leap now. So it's really, you know, working with area schools to see what they're doing. And, uh, I can tell you Harrison and Briar Cliff have done this for years. Um, so really visiting and taking a look at their curriculum and, and asking the hurdles, uh, you know, the difficulties and the successes that they have had with this is imperative.
And, and Mark, I don't even wanna use the word marketing, but, um, presentation, public presentation of this plan, I know you're doing it at a board meeting, we don't know how many people are sitting behind those cameras. So, um, I remember the last time we made a major proposal or shift in science was to, um, was it no honors for chemistry?
No, honors for all.
Honors for all.
But it was not, actually, one, one teacher had the honors, the other one didn't.
Right. So, um, there was a lot of energy, it was amazing how many science teachers live in Putnam Valley, um, from other school districts. So I really would like to see a really good plan of parent communication and I think we should be ready to see how have those results in chemistry been since we've done that? You know, we presented something that was very controversial a couple of years ago. We went with it. I believe anecdotally I've heard to good results, but it would be nice to see that.
You could have a parent info night, re-invite the public in.
Cause there's only nineteen people watching right now. I just looked, so.
And they may not all have eighth graders or seventh graders.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, I know, I see how much work this is and, and I opened, uh, Maria Bradfield's presentation. That's gonna be my weekend reading. Oh my, that's a lot of work.
A lot of information.
Really, I just wanna commend everybody. There's clearly a passion here, so.
All right, well, while we pull up the presentation, I'm gonna introduce the new speaker.
Sorry, can I, can I make one thing? Actually, since we have a bunch of science, a lot, bunch of teachers here, I wonder if there's anybody who wants to say anything about this, rather than just move on to the next thing, if there's anybody who wants to speak in, in, I guess, I would imagine in defense of this, but something that want to add.
There's the support cheering section.
I understand, but they, they're, they're content specialists and probably somebody, they may have a good idea, something to share that, you know, the good Mr. McCarty did not share. But if they don't want to, that's all fine too.
Okay.
Gotta go on camera, sorry. The world, the nineteen people need to see you.
You didn't disclose that part on purpose.
And you have to say your name, even though we know it.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Dreeson and I'm speaking here, um, as a parent. So listening to this presentation as a parent, I think it's, um, wonderful that my child will have a foundation in all of the sciences as an incoming, um, he'll be a seventh grader next year. So maybe not right now, knowing if he's going to pursue a path in science and particularly then be set up for like one specific one, but from my understanding, he would be exposed to all different sciences all the time with that stronger foundation for then to make that choice, um, in high school.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave the offer up, please, anybody who wants to go, I wanna, I wanna hear, cause you don't have this opportunity for teacher input a lot.
Hi, my name is Beth Poust. Um, I just wanted to quickly say that my son, Christopher, we moved here in the middle of eighth grade for him, so he didn't have the opportunity to start taking earth science. So he took general science when he was in eighth grade and he's now in 11th grade and he's in AP physics. So it was not at all a detriment to him. He took living environment, he took bio, um, chemistry and now he's taking AP physics and he truly loves science. So it did not affect him at all in, in his path on this, on that track. Thank you.
Thanks.
And that's even without the new standards, which has even more information. You can introduce the next speaker.
Are we done? I'm just gonna keep staring at the teachers, see if I can guilt them to come up. All right, so I, I'll introduce our new speaker, who was our old speaker. So, um, this presentation, uh, again, will be done by Mr. McCarty and it's gonna cover the middle school budget. I just want to, um, sort of recognize a few things during this presentation, which will start very similar to previous presentations, but I know we're gonna go into what is a proposed schedule at the middle school. So a proposed schedule change at the middle school. So I just wanna recognize that this work began, um, over a year ago with a large group of administrators and teachers who got together with sort of a common vision of finding a better schedule for the middle school that works for all. I know that, that, that group has dwindled over time, but I do wanna recognize, um, certainly Tony Petrillo and Heather Minch, who were instrumental in, in putting together the schedule and put a tremendous amount of time. I know they were assisted with by Kendall and Tracy Parchen and I'm sure I'm forgetting other people and I'll get in trouble for it. But I do wanna just recognize, and I know there's many teachers who came out tonight sort of in support of this proposed schedule, um, but I did wanna recognize that there was a tremendous amount of work that was done on their own time over weekends and nights to try to figure out how to make something happen. And we had a consultant come in and sort of shared him our vision and his response was, I've never seen that before, so I'll have to see if that works. So, um, it's really been done in-house, um, by our own teachers and not, um, sort of contracted out to a consultant. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Dr. Luft. And, you know, I'd be reminisce not to mention that, a little bit of the history of our schedules. So, um, you know, over time, um, our model has changed. In fact, two years ago, um, we had eighty-minute blocks. And, you know, we saw that vision as giving students more time for a single sitting. And, you know, we figured that, you know, it was too much time for middle schoolers to sit. And it became a challenge with transitions and there were a whole bunch of, um, impact that we didn't initially see. Um, so we went back to our old model, which especially in seventh and eighth grade, forty minutes, um, I consider, I use the term the factory model. You sit for forty minutes, you leave, you sit for forty minutes, you leave. And I know, especially teaching in that model years ago, that it was very difficult for me to have a complete lesson in forty minutes. In fact, sixty minutes as a sixth grade teacher is heaven. I s- speak to administrators and teachers across the area all the time and the golden ticket, the golden number is sixty minutes. We've also been called the golden ticket for middle schools because we're a five-eight, um, which all schools don't get that privilege of having. So that's just a little bit of background before I get to that, this, uh, presentation. And again, a huge thank you to those teachers that have been involved in our scheduling task force. It takes a different mind, I will tell you that much. And I think they sleep and they breathe schedules. And I can't be more grateful for those that have been in on this and continue because it's not done yet. So I wanna start off with our enrollment, uh, for this upcoming, uh, 2020, 2021 school year. Um, you're gonna notice a pretty flat change, a change in, uh, nine students over the course of our entire building. As you'll hear from, uh, Margaret Podesta, the elementary school is losing their largest class. My son is actually in it, the current fourth graders. They will be coming to the middle school next year at 128, which is actually eight students larger than the current fifth grade. Our fifth grade's moving up to six at 120. Our six is going to seven at 126 and our largest group next year is gonna be in eighth grade at 135. So, you know, small change, 500 to 509. So our grade five, uh, program overview, there's not a lot of change here in grades five and six. Uh, in grade five, we have three partner teams, which is five sections. We have a humanities, uh, teacher and a math, science teacher, so four general educators, two dual, dual certified teachers and then one achieve class. So this year's numbers, um, average class size is 22.6. Our projected class size at five sections next year is 24.6. Our encores and specials program really doesn't change. Band and chorus, physical education, they do an every other day rotation, so it's an AB. And I just have C, D, E, F here because that's gonna be the impact of my proposed, uh, seventh and eighth grade schedule. And before I was actually a teacher at Putnam Valley Middle School, I am told they went on that rotation. So here, um, we have band and chorus flip-flopping with PE. And then our five encore offerings, art, family and consumer science, which is home ec for those of you that are old school, health, social and emotional learning, and I'm very proud of that, um, encore and technology. So these are on average thirty-six, um, meetings and they're forty-minute sessions, you know, give or take a snow day or two. We could use one of those.
It doesn't snow in the Hudson Valley.
You know, you know what I heard lately and I don't wanna get off task too much, but, uh, Mr. Ignatz was in the middle school and he sees that snow tie up on the wall and he says it has actually cursed our region because Mr. Carlin's down south now and he has stated that I need to ship it to him and then it will change the weather.
You don't want that.
I, I don't know about that.
Keep it on the wall.
So, so, uh, you know, our encore programs, five sections, um, average class size 25.6. All of our students take our encore. Sixth grade, um, same as fifth grade, three partner teams, five sections, humanities, math and science, four general education, two dual certified and one achieve class. Our, uh, average class size this year is at 24. Our projected average class size next year will be 22.8. Encore and specials, identical to fifth grade, band and chorus flip-flop, AB schedule, five encore offerings, art, facts, health, social, emotional learning and technology, thirty-six forty-minute sessions and our class sizes, um, are at 24. Okay, so this is, um, one of our bigger proposed changes and I'll, I'll get more into this in a minute. We're looking at staffing here. Really no change in full-time, um, teachers across the board in ELA, LOT, which is languages other than English, Mandarin, Chinese and Spanish, math. Math, science, I know you had mentioned, is there any personal changes with science eight? The answer's no. Social studies, I'm asking for a point-eight. I'll get into the schedule a little bit more in a minute. But we have been, I don't wanna say short, but we've had larger class sizes in the social studies area, because we have a two-point-two. Actually, a teacher comes over from the high school. And to really help this schedule run efficiently, we need three people. And I'll talk more about that, because it's a change. Rather than forty-minute periods, we have sixty-minute periods and forty. So, it looks a little bit more like fifth and sixth grade. It is sophisticated, but so is the high school schedule. So, our change is a point-eight. Average class sizes, you'll see, twenty-one in seventh grade and twenty-two-point-five in eighth grade with six sections. Here's another change. We actually go on a three-day rotation here with band, chorus, and then an encore. So, in the same block of time in the day, the kids could start off their Monday with band and chorus, their Tuesday with PE, and their Wednesday, let's just say, art. Then they would go to band, PE, art, band, PE, art. They would have art for twenty-one-hour sessions. Now, it's very interesting, because in an art class, it takes a long time to set up, and it takes a long time to break down. So, an hour's time sitting for art really is helpful. And we could see that in PE classes as well. I could see it in band classes, because in our band classes, the kids have five minutes to set up their instruments, five minutes to break them down in a forty-minute period, now we're talking a thirty-minute period. So, if they have hour-long sessions, it's really beneficial to those band teachers, beneficial to those PE teachers. You wanna talk about locker room, getting changed, getting out to your floor spots, and then getting changed again, an hour gives them more opportunity. And remember, this goes throughout the whole year. So, band, chorus, and PE, they get on a three-day rotation the entire year. What's gonna change here is the art, health, and tech. So, after twenty-one-hour sessions of art, the kids will then go to health, and I'm just making this up in this order, could be any order. And then after twenty sessions of health, they could go to twenty sessions of technology. And what we found is, I think there's a difference in three-point-three hours difference compared to what we do now in our CTE requirements. So, our average class sizes here are at twenty-one and twenty-two-point-five, which is less than we have had in the past. Our PE sizes are larger typically, as well as our chorus classes. And I'll talk more about that. So, this is a really telling slide. You know, I, I reached out to the elementary school, and students in the elementary school get ninety minutes of ELA instruction daily. When they come to the middle school, we give them sixty minutes of instruction daily. And you'll notice the blue is with our current schedule, and the gray is going to be with our proposed schedule. Grade six, we give ELA instruction for sixty minutes daily. And then notice the change in seventh and eighth grade. So, we now jump down to forty minutes. And our proposal is, with an average of sixty-minute periods and forty-minute periods, we're looking at fifty minutes of instruction daily, or on average, every other day. So, what you're seeing here is an increase of time. And the number that I'm gonna share with you is astronomical in my mind, which is, they gain thirty hours of instruction in math, science, ELA, and social studies, which equates to an entire current period of that class. So, you know, I'm gonna give you an analogy, I used to coach modified basketball. I coached for five-seven-minute periods. So, everyone's like, "You play four quarters, right?" And I'm like, "No, you don't understand modified rules." We actually play five-seven-minute periods. So, let's pretend right now the kids are getting four-seven-minute periods. With this change, we are giving them five periods, thirty hours of instruction. Now, that's not total. That's thirty hours in social studies, that's thirty hours in science, thirty hours in math, thirty hours in ELA. And by the way, the one thing that this slide doesn't tell you is when these kids go to ninth grade, they get a writing lab every other day. So, you could look at this trend, and you could see it slope back upwards when those kids go to ninth grade. So, wow, we're giving our ninth graders a writing lab. This is thirty extra hours in seventh and eighth grade. So, now I'm gonna shift to math. In the elementary school, they get an hour and fifteen minutes of math instruction daily. They come to fifth and sixth grade, we give them sixty minutes daily. Currently, we give them forty minutes of math in seventh grade, forty minutes of math in eighth grade. With our proposed schedule, on average, on a two-day rotation, they get fifty minutes of instruction, thirty extra hours of math instruction for the entire year. So, let's take a look, I tried to summarize the changes. And this was a big one with our scheduling task force. So, when we went to the eighty-minute block scheduling, we were on a drop. So, our math teachers didn't get to see their students every other day, and they were pretty upset that they didn't have that consistency of seeing your kids every day. It was, it was like a college model. So, that was one of the requests, hey, we need to see our kids every day. So, hey, we were able to meet that need. Teachers see all their kids every day. Thirty more hours of instruction in core subject areas equates to a full quarter of additional instruction. Student schedules rotate vertically. So, that child that has ELA on Monday morning and Tuesday morning and struggles to get to school on time, that's gonna rotate with another subject. So, it won't always impact the same subject. And if you've ever been a classroom teacher, your ninth-period class looks very different from your first-period class, looks very different from your fifth-period class. So, by offering a subject at different times of the day, you may see your, your students in a different light. Sixty- and forty-minute classes with four-minute transitions, no bells. I remember Mr. Halassey saying, "Why are we moving to bells?" We ran on, on no bells for many, many years. In fact, when I was over visiting Copper Beach, they don't have bells, because they're on different schedules. Advisory in fifth and sixth grade, smaller class sizes in PE, band, chorus, and encore. So, our current schedule, teachers do see their students every day, forty-minute classes. Student schedules are stagnant, meaning they see their kids the same period every day. We do have bells, and we do have advisory in five through eight. So, there was a request to see a student's schedule, so I did my best. I actually already had this created. This is a proposal. It's actually an eight-period day. The ninth is in there for fifth and sixth grade because of an advisory. So, they would start their day at seven forty-five in the morning. Period one is actually an hour. I would come on at eight forty-five to give announcements after the kids, you know, have that full transition into period one. Actually, the high school did that here for years, they came on after like second or third period in the day. And then you'll start to see the change in the day. So, a fifth grader will start in a sixty-minute core, they'll then go to a sixty-minute core. They'll then have forty minutes of PE or music, remember that, flip-flops, A-B days. Then their lunch, ten forty to eleven-twenty, IE is intervention and enrichment, forty minutes. Then a core class for forty minutes, an encore, which is those five offerings. Then a forty-minute core, and then they end their day with a sixteen-minute advisory. And boy, the fifth-grade teachers really appreciated that, because it's a nice way to wrap up your day with those kids. And they get their one-book-one-school, they get to talk about culture and cultural responsiveness, they get to talk about Yale ruler and feelings. So, it's a nice way for them to end their day and wrap up. Sixth grade, just a little bit different, sixty-minute core, forty-minute PE music, sixty-minute core, forty-minute core, forty-minute encore. Their lunch would be at twelve-oh-eight to twelve-forty-eight. Forty-minute IE. Then their sixteen-minute advisory comes before their last core. So, they get that advisory before the core, it was the way that we had to do it. Seventh and eighth grade, sixty-minute core, sixty-minute core, a forty-minute intervention and enrichment, forty-minute core, forty-minute core, forty-minute core. Now, you'll notice their lunch is a little bit later in the day, it's twelve-fifty-two to one-thirty-two. We would hope that they might have a snack a little bit earlier, because we know it's a little bit later. We actually end our lunch at one-ten now, so it's a shift of about twenty minutes. And then they end their day with PE, music, or encore. And remember, that's an hour, so don't look at the columns here. They don't have an advisory, that, that last piece there lasts an hour. Our eighth graders start off their day with PE, music, or encore. Then they have a forty-minute core, forty-minute core, sixty-minute core. Their lunch is at eleven-twenty-four. Their IE is forty minutes, and then they finish their day with a forty-core and then a sixty-core. So, it is a change, it is a change. But on average, like I said, thirty additional hours of instruction in those core subjects. So, general education staffing, for fifth and sixth grade, there is no change. I already talked a little bit about that point-eight social studies need. Because of a little bit of movement internally, there's a point-six AIS math need, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. E and L stays the same, so the FTE here for general education staffing changes a one-point-four. And then this is encore and specials, and bear with me here, because there's a little bit of shifting in personnel. Art, we would need an additional point-two. Facts, does anyone know a fax teacher out there, point-four? Ours is retiring. Mrs. Albano has been a tremendous asset to the district, and I know it's not easy finding a fax teacher. So, if you know anyone out there, it is on olas, we're keeping our fingers crossed, or a fax slash certain other subject teacher. Health, we cover internally with a point-two. Zero change in music. PE with some shifting, we're gonna need an additional point-four. Social, emotional learning, zero. Tech, internal, for an additional point-six change. Administration and support staff, no change. So, before I get to questions, I have to tell you, Dr. Luft is meticulous with noticing things. You know, I, I think the overall change here is a two-point-oh or a two-point-two combined. And, you know, there may be a way to shift things in seventh grade by going to five sections. And Ms. Coleman has been tremendous with this in looking to decrease the need that is currently proposed. So, this is still a working schedule, and we are going to do our absolute best to minimize a need. But if we can shift people and make this work for thirty additional hours of instruction in those core subjects, and give those students, you know, and give those teachers as well, you know, I forget to mention, instead of having five sections, they now have four sections. So, it's kinda like the fifth and sixth grade model, where they get to know their students more, because they're with their students more. And I think that's tremendous, and that POD model, I really think it's powerful. And when we shifted back to that POD model, you saw the care for the kids, and you saw that bond between teacher and students, just like you see in the elementary school. And I'm not saying that doesn't exist in seventh and eighth grade, but when you talk about like a junior-high model, and those forty-minute, 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 we're really leaning toward that middle school model, which is giving them that, that more contact time with their teacher. And that's essentially what this is. Do you have any questions?
I, I just wanna comment on the creativity and the, you blew some boxes away to try to look at how it all fits together, so I wanna comment on that. So, just a few questions, and it's fine, but there's no actual fifty-minute core. It's some are forty and some are sixty.
Correct. So, a student on a Monday could have a sixty-minute social studies. On a Tuesday, it would be a forty-minute social studies. So, the average is fifty minutes.
And that would be the same for PE? It's not every PE in music class is a sixty-minute PE, some are forty?
No, those would be, those are always one hour.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, I'm, I was looking at sixth grade, sorry.
Yep. So, fifth and sixth grade PE.
Are staying forty minutes.
Are forty. When they get to seventh and eighth grade, they're hour-longs. And actually, those hour-long go the entire year for PE, band, and chorus. The only thing that goes on a rotation there and is dropped would be those, those three encores.
Right, right, but it's still the A-B-C, A-B-C, A-B-C.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. This is not anything about the schedule. We're still changing for gym? I know a lot of middle schools are moving away from changing for gym due to gender issues and safety issues and security issues.
Yeah, they still do change for PE. You, you wanna, you wanna know what the, what the change usually entails? Their shoes.
I know, I know.
So, it's their change from their sandals to their sneakers, or their.
Flip-flops or whatever.
Whatever, you know? Usually, the change is shoes, to be honest. You don't see the kids change their full outfits as we did, you know, twenty years ago.
Everybody's wearing leggings, so. And no advisory for seventh and eighth.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, on a related topic, is, is the, Dr. Luft, the schedule for the renovations for the capital project for the middle school with the cafeteria in particular, is that, everything going beautifully as expected? When is that timetable?
So, I mean, our expectation, because everything's gonna go swimmingly, just like you said, is that that cafeteria would be open in September. The, we did discuss, and in fact, up until recently, the, the schedule was built with a community lunch for both five-six and seven-eight, so two lunches, one-five-six, one-seventy. So, it could certainly be put back to that down the road. I think I got nervous, as well as others, about making that contingent on the cafeteria being done, the kitchen being done, having it smoo, uh, run as smoothly as needed to get a hundred-and-twenty-five kids to recess and a hundred-and-twenty-five kids from recess into lunch, to be able to split that group right there. So, it's something that I still think there's a lot of interest in down the road. But I think we decided for the first year, you're probably, we're probably asking, we're biting off more than we can chew with everything else. So, the fact that Tony and Heather were able to change the schedule to make for distinct lunches, which we weren't even sure was gonna be possible, was a change, like a last-minute change we made, because we don't, we don't wanna do too much at once.
Sure.
Can I speak to that as well real quick? So, one of the issues that came up that I didn't initially see, this schedule was all set with a two-period lunch. Five would be outside at recess, six would be eating, then they'd flip-flop. Seventh would be outside eating, eighth, I'm sorry, inside eating, eighth would be outside, flip-flop, right? It came down to personnel.
Yep.
And what we would be doing is taking our lunch and recess monitors and cutting their day in half.
Right.
And we would also need to hire six additional.
For the numbers, right.
For the numbers. And I just saw that as impossible. Like, where do we find six more people to come in for half that time? And you look at this human side of it as well, so.
So, then on, as far as now the plan, 'cause, right, is it currently, they're still splitting grades as far as half of the, half of the grade is eating well? So, that's changed now?
We have changed. Dr. Mohica, notice this smile on my face. So, Dr. Mohica proposed, hey, why don't we let them all eat together? Why don't we let them all outside together? I have never had such a more smooth opening to the year. I would have thirty phone calls, my friend, my child's best friends in the other lunch group. Now, I only received one phone call to say, my, a child that, you know, my child doesn't get along with is in the same lunch group. Yeah, okay, it's a large lunchroom.
Which is why I was bringing up.
Sit at different tables.
Which is why I was bringing up the renovation, because I didn't know that we were actually physically capable to seat them all at the same time until we had the new lunch, okay?
We are, and actually, we have a plan in place for shifting our students to different spaces while those renovations are taking place. So with Dave Spittle and Dr. Luft, we have a plan in place.
There's no LOT, LOT in fifth and sixth grade?
That's the difference.
Okay. Is there a, will it be an encore or not?
I'm sorry?
Will there be, would it be a potential encore or no?
LOT has, we have not had LOT in fifth and sixth grade for a number of years.
Okay.
Um, it's really the game changer. It's what, is that additional period in seventh and eighth grade? Um, and of course, we still have Mandarin. We have a section of Mandarin in seventh, a section of Mandarin in eighth, and now in ninth, and next year it'll be tenth. So, yeah, that's really the game changer in the schedule for seventh and eighth grade. And, and one else, one other difference that I'd like to mention is right now with Earth Science, there's a lab attached, which makes it very difficult for services. So when we have students get OTPT, speech and language, Wilson, AIS reading, AIS math, when you have five of those competing with Earth Science lab, it is really difficult to give them consistent services. With Earth Science eight, it's all within the class, that now opens that period for those services.
So there's no, to hearken back to the previous presentation, there's no external additional labs for, for Science eight?
It is, it is correct. It's within, within the class. There's no regs like the Regents.
Right.
Are I and, is I and E what has been periodically called skills?
Yes.
Et cetera, et cetera, and will there be any adjustment to that expectation in seventh, eighth to maybe hit a little of that advisory-ish relationship building?
Advisory, extra help. What's really nice is our seventh and eighth grade teachers have built that in a help period. So those kids transition to other IEs to get that support from their teachers. So I don't wanna call it officially a lab, but I am so impressed with how our seventh and eighth grade teachers provide that. I often hear, you know, when a child's struggling, well, are they seeking you out for that help? And they say, yes, absolutely, they're coming to me and getting that support. And I hear that, you know, I meet with our teams weekly. And that's also a great benefit in the schedule for those that don't know. All, every grade level in our building meets for a professional every day of the week. So our schedule is so aligned that those teachers get that time. And myself and Dr. Mohica have two professionals every week and two students of concern meetings. It's kinda like RTI, um, and then it flips flops the other week. So we see our teams, um, scheduled every week. Lots of meetings, as Dr. Entery says to me. You have a lot of meetings.
So each team, like the whole seventh grade team, has common planning time?
They do.
That's great. That was actually one of my questions.
Every day, every day.
Great.
So, um, how much of the additions that you're looking for in staffing are based on the schedule as opposed to just doing the program without schedules change? A schedule change?
In other words, can we do this without a point-eight increase?
Well, the answer is if we, if we don't change the schedule, then we have no need for staffing change, with the exception that we have to fill the fax opening.
Okay.
So the, the additional staff is one-hundred percent connected to-
Okay.
The proposed schedule.
And then I'm, maybe I'm having some PTSD on when we did the rotate, we tried to rotating schedule and the block schedule here in the high school. And I wanna, and, you know, maybe it's probably not appropriate, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I wanna make sure we're looking at contract, because we don't wanna get nailed for, if we're getting thirty hours of extra educational time, I wanna make sure that we're not gonna have contractual issues come back to get us in the end because we're doing that.
Sure. So I could speak to that. When the scheduling task force first began, it was an agreement between the district and the union that we were gonna put all of the contractual language aside and let this collaborative process between administration and teachers sort of lay the groundwork for what that language should be. I think both sides agree that the language we have that governs how our day is broken up is antiquated. And, and we have actually a labor relations committee that's meeting to address that language to come up with something that works in each building and is common sense. So that part is certainly done, but the agreement before this work ever started was that the teachers and the administrators had the freedom, as long as they were gonna agree on what was best to, to build the schedule that does not necessarily fit within the constraints of the contractual language. So what we just shared here, certainly, you can never apply logically the language that, as it exists now, into the schedule that's there. So the labor relations committee that's meeting would come up with new language that would still, that would cover the middle school schedule as well as the high school and others, to, to have it open-ended to, to make sure that it would work. So we would've never gone this far if we thought we were gonna run into contractual issues. So that was our agreement when this work began, was that we were willing to put that aside, build the schedule that works, and then write the language that fits the schedule as, as opposed to the other way around.
So I can stop with my tics?
Yes.
And I do notice, and I love it, 'cause I work in a school that does this as well, there are a number of periods that not everybody's moving in the hallway at the same time.
Correct.
You take your life into your hand walking into a middle school hallway.
You do.
You absolutely take, it is a risky proposition when they're all moving at once. So I actually like that a great deal, so.
Except for between first and second period.
Well, there's a couple of times. There, there is actually only a few times that it is scattered, but it's more times it's not, but any little bit helps.
And I, I wanna thank the board for looking deeply into the schedule. I have to say, there are lots and lots of hours and lots of support from our middle school staff, and the time that has been put in and, and looking at everything with, under a microscope. And we're still, still looking at it under a microscope. But I think what you'll see is the need is really minuscule compared to the benefits of what our children will get out of it. And I think it's something that almost mirrors what our fifth and sixth graders get. It's close, not quite there, but it is more than what they're currently offered. And, you know, when you see the elementary school numbers, time of instruction in ELA in math, and then that high school writing lab on both sides of us, we really see that need and change in seventh and eighth grade. I think it would be great, greatly beneficial.
Just wanna emphasize two quick points. One is the, the numbers that Mr. Cardy shared this evening, really, that really represents what's sort of a, a worst-case scenario in terms of staffing needs. And that we continue to look for efficiencies within the proposed schedule. And I know that work is continuing between myself and the members of the scheduling task force to see, can we reduce that number within the, within the schedule without changing what was sort of the structure of the schedule itself? So that's something we continue to do. The other piece is, and Dr. Entery is certainly aware, is, is we're exploring the possibility of sharing staff between buildings now. Obviously, the high school schedule is a much more complex system, and course selection is just going on now. So we don't necessarily know the staffing needs of the high school and any potential availability for staff to be shared, but that certainly exists as well. So certainly, my hope is, although the two-point-two FTE represents our current reality, is that we can find efficiencies and we can find opportunities to share staff between buildings and reduce that number as much as possible. As I said before, obviously, our financial outlook is, is not ideal, but I also, I don't wanna lose an opportunity to take advantage of something that, I guess my second point was, I just wanna reiterate, our students would receive an entire extra quarter of instruction in the four content areas, core content areas. And I just think that's a tremendous opportunity. And if we're able to pull this off, I envision lines of middle school principals lining up in front of our building to try to figure out how they can create a model that buys them a fifth quarter of instruction for all their middle school students, so.
By the way, I can also share with you, we do have Austin Middle School visiting us in March to see our advisory program. And I also have a school from Connecticut coming, John Reed Middle School, um, to see what we're doing and all the great things that we're currently doing. And, you know, I always feel proud when schools reach out to us and say, can we come visit and see the wonderful things that you do? For years, it was the laptop program. Now that's kinda trickling away as other schools get that technology. But it makes me proud that schools wanna come and see us, really does.
Yeah, I, I love this, I do, I love the schedule. It's amazing how many different ways there are to increase. I work in a school that did fifty-six minute for one, forty for another. You know, there's a lot of different ways, as long as the result is more core time. I would like it for without a cost of point-eight. So that is something that I think, I'm glad Dr. Luft, let's look at what we can do district-wide. See if we can do that without cost.
I think the term is being creative.
Yes.
I mean, I do, I do think we've got, what, three, Jill? Three board meetings until we adopt a budget, which essentially turns into-
Two in March, yes, and one in April.
Yeah, so I think that turns into six to eight weeks before everything's final, and that, that comes fast. So sharpen those pencils.
Thank you. And thank you for all the middle school staff that came, thank you.
And before we go, I'm gonna break orthodoxy again. If there are teachers that wanna say anything about this piece, I'd be happy to hear about it.
You're going rogue today.
We don't, we often don't have an audience, so if somebody wants to say something, I'd love for them to say something specific about this.
Look, somebody else.
See, that's, asking precedes giving, all right?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Phyllis Conlon. I teach math eighth grade and algebra at the middle school. And to know that I can have those extra time with my students, I am so excited. Last year, I did love, I might've been in the minority, of having eighty minutes, because there's never enough time. So thinking ahead that I will get that extra time, one of my favorite phrases that I say frequently in class is I despise that bell, and I hate that bell, because it's forty minutes, they're in, they're out, and we're done. So thank you for allowing us to have that extra time, and I hope it goes through.
Because we know forty minutes, when you have that many hormones walking into a classroom, is not forty minutes. It's just not.
They're not hormones, they're people.
They're people with hormones.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have other stuff to do?
No, now we go home.
No, we have to talk about the calendar.
School calendar.
Oh, yeah.
That's our favorite.
It doesn't get any better than this. Almond?
I would like a moment, thank you.
I'll stall if you guys wanna leave.
Seven-thirty comes very early, I get it. Do you want almonds? Do you want almonds? What's happening over in that corner there?
It's a very small calendar. It's a very small calendar.
I'm very, very old. I cannot read that.
You can get it on your laptop, it's bigger.
Is it time for a break? Everybody can just stand up and stretch out?
I'm cold.
I might just stand for one moment.
I went to, I'll sit, I'll say this in front of the microphone, people here. I went to a formal school board meeting this past week, just to kinda see how the other half lives type of thing.
So it's like scouting business?
It was totally scouting business, and it was a nightmare. Not to disparage them, but they had a lot of stuff going on before they even got any business done. They started with, with open comment, and then it went down this rabbit hole of Puerto Rico trip and stuff, which is crazy. My point is, people were getting up from the table all over the place. Like, presentations were happening, and it wasn't like a pause and a transition. People just getting up and walking around and-
Oh my God, I'm locked into this chair.
I'm like, I'm watching, like, wait a minute, there's three empty, four empty chairs there, it's like, very different. Again, not to disparage, just, I'm realizing, in a transition, I'm gonna get up and save my back, so that's why I did that. Sorry, nobody cares.
Not true, Joe, not true.
Nineteen people who are watching don't care.
They're, they're very concerned for your back.
They're just like losing people.
I scared them all away.
Now, they don't care about the calendar. All right, go, Dr. Luft.
All right. So, last board meeting, we discussed the draft calendar, which was completely in line with the BOSI's calendar that had been adopted for this school year. So the calendar's up for adoption, but this is an opportunity to have one final discussion about it. And I'll, I'll introduce one curveball thought that was raised to me today, so I will forward it onto the board, was as part of our contractual agreement with the teachers' union, they have the opportunity to advise on the calendar. So their advisement included a consideration of the possibility of starting before Labor Day with students. Now, I know that there are a couple of schools in the area who are proposing that model. I know Lakeland right next door plans on starting with students before Labor Day. So the trade-off there would be if we added two days of instructional time before Labor Day, that that would equate to two other days off during the school year. The most likely dates for those would be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and the Friday before Memorial Day.
Would those be turned into superintendent conference days then?
We already have to.
We already have our four conference days, so those are just-
Right, but if we start before Labor Day, obviously, we're not gonna have students on superintendent's conference days. And before Labor Day would be the third or fourth, right?
So the conference days would move to the Monday and Tuesday, and the student days would be Wednesday and Thursday, yeah.
And give everybody the Friday long weekend.
Give everyone a long weekend, yes.
I, I know that we usually get comments when we start students before Labor Day, unless there's absolutely no choice. We get a lot of comments, so.
Well, only because I think families make plans sometimes a year in advance, and so they, you know, they've already made their plans.
And a lot of camps only end a week before, I don't know.
Right, it's the last family, hurrah.
Right.
If we had started there, maybe, but I think, not that we're tied in, I think, my gut says, if we're completely aligned with BOSI's, let's stay completely aligned with the BOSI's, and that's my gut. But, you know, I don't, I'm not firmly ensconced in that opinion. Somebody has a really good argument, otherwise, I'd be open to hear it.
And would, is there any, um, benefit, I guess, the question is, to one, well, no, it's the same thing. One superintendent's conference day and two student days, but it's still two student days, so.
I just think we'll also have really, not great attendance for opening, it's not a good vibe for people coming in that next Tuesday when they missed the Thursday and Friday before. That's just, maybe I'm projecting, but I just, I could envision that being the case where you, rather than having ninety percent or ninety-five percent attendance rate on the first day, you'd have like a seventy or eighty.
Well, and you get, the way this calendar lays out, your first teaching week, you've got them four days. It's not like you've got two, and then they're off for four, and then they come back. You know what I mean? Like, you got a solid four days to start, like it's a start. And it's not start, stop, and restart.
Holidays and all that other stuff.
And then two solid weeks.
And the benefit of this calendar year is a lot of the Jewish holidays-
No days off for Rosh Hashanah.
Aren't really chopping up the calendar a whole lot.
There's no days off at all for Rosh Hashanah, and it's just a long weekend for Yom Kippur.
And we often find a very choppy September, which is hard for a start of school.
Right, you feel, you get to the end of September, you feel like you really haven't even started yet.
Right.
You haven't had a full week sometimes. I mean, there have been some Septembers where there was not a full week at all in September, so.
Well, there was a Labor Day, there, we had Labor Day, then we had Tuesday, Wednesday, and then the Jewish holidays were Thursday, Friday.
So, yeah.
So I think we'd like to keep it the way it is.
All right. I agree.
Any thoughts, Guy?
Yeah, no, I agree.
And then, well, yeah, we have to adopt it today, so I was gonna say Jeanette could weigh in, but. Alrighty, we had heard from super, the, the students. Now we are ready to hear from the superintendent report, Dr. Luft.
I don't want you guys to miss me too much.
No.
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. So here is my superintendent's report for this meeting. I don't know the level of awareness, but our former leader, Dr. Wills, was nominated to apply to fulfill, to fill the position of state board of regents for Judith Johnson, who unexpectedly passed away. who unexpectedly passed away. She actually went through several rounds of interviews and ended up before a mix of senators and, and assembly people at the, at the State Education Department, where she was interviewed for forty minutes, and she's considered one of the, I think, maybe twelve people up for consideration for that seat. So it's certainly a prestigious honor. It's an unpaid position at the State Education Department. I'm curious to whether or not we'll be asked to provide her a new office, if she gets it, so that's to be determined, but I think it's a great deal of excitement. I thought she did really well. We were able to livestream the interview, and I know that Dr. Trary, Jeanette Mastrata, and Ryan Odell traveled up to Albany with her to sit in the gallery while she was interviewed. So we wish her the best, and I think it's a very exciting opportunity for her and, and for Putnam Valley.
Thankless.
Sort of like being a board member.
Kinda.
There was actually a board member being interviewed, and I, I made sure many of my friends saw me say, "I will never, ever, ever, ever do that."
Just a rundown of the happenings. So we continue our administrators' mid-year evaluations. I've already met with every administrator once, and now we're sort of doing a second round follow-up. We have some building walkthroughs scheduled and other good stuff like that, so that work is in process. We met with the PTA Executive Board recently to discuss strategies for fundraising and how do you cultivate greater excitement and involvement of our community members. We continue to work with the PVFT. As I mentioned before, there were a couple items that we did not include in the ratified contract, but we have a labor relations committee that's continuing to work on those items, so that work continues. Our CSEA unit contract is up at the end of this year, so Jill Figarella and Natalie Doherty have been meeting with CSEA representatives, working to get a successor contract in place. We started our planning for upcoming superintendent's conference day, which is scheduled for March thirteenth. We had, last school year, Dr. Wills had brought in Dr. Cassie Yakli to come in and talk about trauma-informed schools, and the feedback was extremely positive from teachers across all three buildings, so I quickly tried to schedule her for this year, and March thirteenth is the first date I can get her. So she's scheduled to come back to the district on that day. She'll be meeting with, with groups of teachers for a block of time to talk more about trauma-informed schools, and will be taking the next step of creating a steering committee of interested teachers and clinical staff and administrators who want to sort of take the lead on that work here in Putnam Valley. As I mentioned earlier, the high school course selection process is underway. We were actually, several of us were invited to go to the, the presentations of course selection, and it was actually a really informative process. It's sort of like an academic version of speed dating, where each department coordinator gets up there and shares sort of the overview of their department, the electives they have to offer, and give all the reasons to the students why they should pick their course over others. So it was actually really interesting. The teachers did a great job, they had presentations, they had demonstrations, they had models for students to see, so it was really great, it was informative, and I think the students enjoyed it. I know that, well, Jeanette Mastrata is attending a culturally responsive classrooms workshop. She actually, during our administrative team meeting yesterday, took us through an activity and provided an overview, and I actually wanted to give her the opportunity just to say a few words about the work that she's doing within that program now.
Sure, so I have been part of the Instructional Leadership Team Institute with exploring the culturally responsive, sustainable framework through Putnam, Northern Westchester BOSI's. It's a series of three sessions, the institute, we've, I've attended two, and the last one will be in March. During the institute, we work to develop an understanding of culturally responsive and sustaining education, plan how to incorporate the four principles of culturally responsive, sustaining framework into school communities, and also, we participate in collegial sharing and sharing our anticipated action plans, so it's been very helpful. The culturally responsive, sustaining, or CRS, framework, framework from New York State is intended to help educational stakeholders create student-centered learning environments that affirm cultural identities, foster positive academic outcomes, develop student abilities to connect across lines of differences, elevate historically marginalized voices, empower students as agents of social change, and contribute to individual student engagement. The framework was designed to support education stakeholders in developing and implementing policies that educate all students effectively and equitably. The framework is grounded in four principles, which are welcoming and affirming environments, high expectations and rigorous instruction, inclusive curriculum and instruction, and ongoing professional learning. So at our last admin meeting, we, I began an introduction to this work with our administrative team through an activity called My Story, which had us explore and share who we are. And I thank the administrators for participating, because they had to kind of put themselves out there. The activity had our admins open up to each other, share personal stories, and it really was surrounded around their first and middle names, not last names. And ultimately, through this activity, we were able to learn more about each other and have a deeper understanding of each other and our identities, and it was fun. And we learned some interesting things about people and their names, and name changes, and who doesn't have names, and lots of different things. So our next steps moving forward, like I said, I will be going back and completing that third session in March, and then next steps would be taking a closer look at the four principles, and then also forming our cultural responsive, sustaining district committee, of which I will be a part of, and then we will have representatives from the three schools. Once that committee is formed, kind of the beyond work, it would be taking a look at, obviously, the principles, introducing the framework and the principles to our entire staff, and then kind of diving into pedagogy, and what are the unique strengths and qualities of each student, how do we encourage their academic achievement and sense of belonging in the classroom, assessing and modifying current teaching practices, and instruction to consider all student backgrounds and include culture within, embedded within all of our teaching. So I will update after our March session.
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment to recognize that Dr. Doherty has been bouncing around between all three buildings, working with her clinical staff to, to some enrollment projections for next school year, so obviously, that has a direct impact on our staffing and our needs moving forward, so I just wanted to recognize that she's been busy doing that. I've attended building faculty meetings, as I mentioned before, the elementary and middle school. I did that financial status presentation that I shared earlier this evening, and then I did want to recognize, many of us were invited to the high school faculty meeting this week, where Lisa Furlong did a presentation. The high school has sort of a unifying theme this year, or something that they decided on during Well, Well at an IB conference, and it was sort of the anniversary of the fall of the Berlin Wall, and that was their, their sort of unifying theme, and they've done different things throughout the building. So Lisa did a presentation that sort of titled Art of the Wall, and the room was packed, and it, it was, I'm trying to think of a good word. It was amazing. I'm not sure I've been to a more powerful presentation at a faculty meeting in my life. It was certainly eye-opening, you could hear a pin drop in here, just the, the depth and the emotion and everything else associated with the presentation was really impressive. I told her I was signing up, signing her up for a TEDx. I don't know if she thought I was kidding, but I wasn't. We already signed her up to present at the next IB conference. It was really impressive, so I did want to recognize, there was a tremendous amount of work that went into it, and I did want to take an opportunity to recognize her. I told her I would invite her to do the presentation here at a board meeting, but it's an hour long, and that we didn't really have the time, but maybe I'll convince her to do a shorter version. The high school Hall of Fame actually had their second meeting this week, and they're continuing their work in terms of building the guidelines and the structure, and making decisions on how our Putnam Valley Hall of Fame will operate, so that's continued to be a work in progress. The high school had an assembly where they had a soldier come in and talk about really the dangers of drinking and driving, and he was involved in a tragic accident in which he was driving and killed one of his best friends, and then spent, I believe, five years in prison. So it was a very powerful assembly to our students, and I, I think certainly he got his message across. We had a principals' meeting recently, obviously, it is the season, we focused on budget and staffing. I know that Jeanette ran a new innovative classroom academy meeting this week. We also had a Communities That Care meeting that was attended by a couple of our assistant principals, Jeanette Mastrata, and I know I mentioned before that there were several students there, so I think that was powerful, having students. I did want to recognize our partnership with the fire department. Larry Cobb was over here the other day, meeting with Dave and myself, and he brought along a colleague of his, who I later found out was Dan's father. So they, they were willing to partner with us, there was a conversation regarding access to the Health and Wellness Center, and whether or not they needed a dedicated road or access point to it, and they were ultimately able to make the decision that that was not going to be necessary, and sort of wrote a letter in support of that decision, so I just wanted to acknowledge their continued partnership with the school district. And this morning, Barb Parmley and I attended Westchester Putnam School Board Association panel titled Smart Time, in which Dr. Intriari was one of the panel members, where they talked about the research and the processes that districts utilize to move to a later start time, so I thought she did a tremendous job, it was very well received, and I thought that there was lots of kudos to Putnam Valley for making the change and for all of the other things that are going on, so she certainly represented us well, and we were very proud to be there. And then, just one last public service announcement, our facilities project, obviously, the bids were scheduled, originally scheduled to be open a couple weeks ago, we got some late feedback from the State Education Department in terms of changes they wanted to see, or drawings they wanted us to create, so that pushed back our bid schedule. So now, we're scheduled to open our bids next week over break on the nineteenth, so I hope that date remains firm, and after that point in time, we'll certainly have a much better sense of how and when we'll move forward with the project. Just a couple of events, the high school had their National Science Honor Society induction, fourth grade had a winter concert, Gattona Museum Young Artist exhibit, the National Honor Society had their blood drive here at the high school, and just yesterday, the high school had their aspire art celebration, and the new artwork is already hung up downstairs in the junior, senior lounge. That's it, thank you.
Had we had the middle school talent show? We had that.
I do.
Have we had that since then?
I think I talked about it last time, because I got the sneak preview of the middle school, the sneak preview of the middle school talent show, so I talked about it at our last board meeting, but I'm sure it was even more impressive than the dress rehearsal I thought.
It wasn't, the fact that it was fully planned by students is just fabulous. Okay, perfect. I'd like to open it up for public comment on agenda items. Alright, moving on to new business. Mr. Ferro, can you start us with number one?
Resolved to authorize clerk of the district to arrange and enter into contracts for voting machines, privacy booths, poll books, to have the necessary ballots printed, and to make other arrangements of this district budget vote and board election scheduled for May nineteenth, twenty twenty, as are necessary and appropriate. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Immediately.
Very dramatic, Ms. Ferro. Number two.
Resolved to set the following dates for action regarding the twenty twenty twenty-one district budget vote and board election. May fifth, twenty twenty, final budget hearing, seven PM at the high school library. May fifth, twenty twenty, voter registration at the high school from four to eight PM. May twelfth, twenty twenty, voter registration at the high school from four to eight PM. May fourteenth, twenty twenty, voter registration at the elementary school from three thirty to seven thirty PM. May nineteenth, twenty twenty, budget vote and board election at the elementary school from six AM to nine PM.
Second.
Questions or comments? I have just, go ahead.
I was just gonna make a quick comment. It, it is possible, if you cannot make those voter registrations, anytime the district's business office at, behind the elementary school is open, you can go there and always register. And if you are registered in the county to vote in a regular election, you don't have to register, but if you can't make these registration dates, you can always go to the district office.
My question is, do, my question was, do we have, do we support our eighteen-year-old students in registering if they so choose? I know when it was, they used to be able to go downstairs in this building, and we're starting voter registration at four, could there be one day that it starts at two?
Mr. Odell, last year, Mr. Skip Holy took it upon themselves to get some kids registered, and I'm hoping they'll do that again this year, yes.
Just give them the opportunity, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved to approve the notice of public board budget hearing, budget vote and election for the Putnam Valley Central School District, as per document one twenty-eight slash twenty. Attach the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one district calendar as per document number one thirty slash twenty. Attach the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Immediately.
Number five.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Gina Garibaldi to the position of part-time, homebound instructor for a classified student at the Step Two hourly rate of pay as per the PVFT before-after-school instructional rate of pay salary schedule for a maximum of ten hours per week, effective February ten, twenty twenty. Ms. Garibaldi holds a New York State Permanent Special Education Certificate.
Seconds.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through thirteen, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving CSE, CPSC placements. We're approving contract with the Eastchester School District for one of our children with special needs who will be attending there. We're approving health and welfare contracts for Putnam Valley students attending private schools in Dobbs Ferry, Osning, and Yorktown. That means that they're going to private schools, but the public schools still supply the healthcare, and we pay for that. We're arranging payments to blithe our children for therapeutic services for one of our students. We're approving three staff members to be health advisory council coordinators. We're approving additional hours for staff to provide supervision for students participating, who participate in the fourth grade concert, and for the supervise the world language speaking exams, and for the science research competition, we're approving additional staff hours. We're accepting a generous donation of five hundred dollars from the Alliance Energy LLC to be used for math and science programs at the high school. We're accepting amendments to the contract with the Westchester Putnam theretine, and to authorize the superintendent to sign, and what we're basically doing is adding language about speech and language pathology, which this group helps us supply. We're approving an overnight trip for the wrestling team for the Caruso tournament in Albany. We're approving in-service credits for one staff member, we're approving additions to the substitute team list. And finally, we're approving Dr. Luft, the superintendent of the Putnam Valley Central School District, to attend the Westchester Putnam School Board meeting on February thirteenth about school district start times, which just took place.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to public comment on any topic? Okay, then, go, I'm sorry, I forgot about us. Anybody from the board?
I have a couple things. Guy, I wonder if you had, and I didn't, I should have asked this earlier, do you have any thoughts on the science eight piece, it's so tied, math's so tied into, I just wonder if you were thinking about, some of your thinking on the science eight?
I, you know, one, it's difficult to make a decision until you actually see what actually happens and what takes place and what they discuss, but I am in favor of it, you know, one, you're talking to a person who took science back in the fifties, where you took earth science, biology, chemistry, and possibly physics, you know? I believe in the general understanding than these specific subjects, so it does make sense. make sense. And, but we just, as you, you mentioned a couple times, we have to see what happens, we have to see what the state actually deals to their curriculum, how ours matches with that, and how our students perform as they go forward in time. So, it's very difficult to actually make a decision on it until you see it. And you hate to think about experimenting with our students, but we have such a strong team that you have faith in them, that we are gonna be positive.
I have a second thing, as part of the, my Carmel visit, they have really nice chairs. They're big, they're reclining, they're, they're nice and on wheels.
Do you want me to move one of the egg chairs over for you?
That's, that's not the same thing. That has nothing to do with anything else. But something a little bit more serious that might not come across as serious, I know I've kind of brought it up in a joking way, but not really. I think we need to get a handle on branding and use of our, our, our marks and the right tigers and all that stuff to be consistent, and something set up that's very much focused on conveying the same consistent message. I, I think that it's important that we kind of limit all the rogue tigers out there that just happen to be the ones that are picked, because that's the website that they decided to go with to create the orders for PTA or for the booster team, and we just pick whatever tiger we want to. And, and I know it seems a little trivial, but at the same time, I think awareness and consistency connotes pride, no pun intended. I, I think that, that's something that's important, the use of the seal is one thing, parts of the seal, but I do think, you know, maybe BOSI's can come into the mix and, and help us kind of create that palette. What I don't want to see is going into a budget season and athletics is gonna go out and purchase a bunch of new uniforms and equipment that has some other random tiger on it, before they go and do that, that we at least make some progress, because, you know, you're stuck with a uniform for years. So, just a thought, I, I, you know, again, I hesitate to bring it up, because I brought it up a number of times, kind of in a backhanded way, but I think in earnest, because I got a, a request for the creation of something else, another logo or tiger, and I just, I think we need to, you know, the high school is now twenty years old, and essentially, our tiger was birthed out of the high school being birthed, as far as the quote official tiger. But we've not gone and made anything really official, other than the P and the V being kind of the standard. Everything else is kind of up in the air, and I think it would be a responsible thing to do to, to kind of just get a handle on, on the whole thing and not, and so we, I've said enough, but that's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
And we could put those approved logos on the big black chairs. That way, when the chair is empty, you can be advertising.
How come that navy blue?
Well, okay, I like that.
I'd like, then, if there's nothing else from anybody else on the board, I would like, or at the table, I would like resolved to adjourn the business meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody, and have a good break next week.
Celebrate those presents.
My computer died.
Because you're a book.
Oh, no, because it died.